Two minutes.
One minute.
Good, good. How are you doing? Great. Well, watch, uh, be careful about your elbow. AM. The, uh, Pledge of Allegiance will be held by Supervisor Jim Gillio.
Ready, salute.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of what is one nation under God, in the good soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have an acknowledgement certificate of posting?
So, Mr. Chair.
On favor.
Aye.
Five oh. Presentations and recognitions, Supervisor, uh, I'm sorry, Behavior Health Department. I put one on your desk, please.
Are you looking at red ribbon?
Yes, sir.
My honor to present a proclamation for Red Ribbon Month. Side note, the Red Ribbon Run is coming up on October 19th, I believe it is. Is that right, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll be down there participating, hope to see you all down there. Whereas alcohol, tobacco, and drug abuse cost California billions of dollars every year and impedes California, the ability of Californians to lead healthy and productive lives, the California Department of Healthcare Services, alcohol and drug programs, the Behavior Health Department, Department of Education, local law enforcement, and community-based organizations are embracing the California Red Ribbon Celebration to highlight the support of substance abuse prevention. Now therefore, the San Benito County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as 30th Annual Red Ribbon Month in San Benito. This started in, um, back in around 1990, 85, and I don't know if you remember, there was a DEA agent named Enrique Quique Camarena who was killed, um, by the Mexican cartels, and, um, uh, there was a movement to wear red ribbons around the, uh, his death, and, uh, that's where this started. Just a little bit of, a tiny bit of history on that, and, um, I'll present this here and allow Alan to say a few words if you'd like.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, first of all, I want to thank the board for their support of this event because it's been going on for, as the supervisor told us, for 30 years now, so I really appreciate getting the county's support. But I think the most important part for me in, uh, accepting this proclamation every year is to thank all the people involved in the planning process because it just takes so much work to do any of these events, and this year, our staff and some of our allied partners have expanded the events, and they will be doing the Red Ribbon Run, which will be over at the Vets Hall, and that'll be October the 19th. The starting place will be the Vets Hall at nine, at 8:00 AM. And then, uh, we're also doing a Fall Festival this year, and I really need to thank the schools for their cooperation with that, and that'll take place at May's Middle School, and that'll actually be November the 2nd. And, uh, again, I want to thank all the agencies involved, Hollister Recreation, Hollister PD, um, the businesses in town that donate things for raffle prizes, the people that'll be out at booths at the Fall Festival. Um, I hope I'm not missing anybody, but there are just so many people involved in this process, and we just really appreciate getting that support. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to, uh, public comment. This is the opportunity to address the board on items of interest not appearing on the agenda. No action may be taken unless provided by Government Code Section 54954.2. Any public comment?
For Speaker Jerry Tatro.
They called you Jerry.
Jerry? Is this in regards to the business note?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I would, sorry.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Jerry Tatro. I'm on Slenus Grade Road, and, uh, this is directed at probably more toward Anthony Potello and Ray over here. They assured me here about three months ago that something would be done on our road up there, and as of now, nothing's been done on our road to any degree at the lower portion, where we travel every day. Our road is highly used on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday especially, and I would like to see something done on it. I've asked you guys about three or four times to come in here and, and talk to it, and, uh, I'd, I'd like to see. Now, Ray, you, you mentioned that at one time I was on a list. I don't know which list that was, but, uh, I'd like to see something done, and we're ve- very tired of winter coming up, and we, we have nothing done on that road. That is a south entrance to this area, to San Juan and, and Hollister. You gotta think about that, and it's a mess. You gotta do something about it. Please do something, will you please? The other thing is, I had a tree, and I gave you a, I know, an invoice regarding the tree that was in the right-of-way. The tree has been, uh, trimmed and cut and, and taken down, but it's still in the culvert, and still you're, you're responsibility. I have heard nothing regarding what's to be taking place, and you're paying for it or taking, working with me on it. So, I would appreciate you doing something. I'd like to hear back from you, Anthony. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I'm Natasha Wiss, and, uh, my, uh, comment is on the, the three-minute buzzer rule. First, three minutes is a limited time to express one's opinion. From my observation, most speakers at this podium are well-prepared to end at their allotted three minutes. The few people who do not are usually first-time speakers and not as adept at the process. I have gotten feedback from several women who said, "I really have something to say to the board, but I'm just too nervous or afraid to go up there." As to the buzzer, the sound is not only excessively loud, but designed to assault and intimidate. Most speakers who are buzzed, I notice, leave the podium with their heads down. In a democracy, the purpose of elected officials is to serve the public and promote the common good. I find that opening the meeting with a strong and authoritative warning to all of us to be respectful and not cause a ruckus implies that we, the public, may turn into a rabble or mob and challenge the authority of the board. My suggestion for a more democratic discourse is to hold up a 30-second sign when a speaker is over time and let him or her finish his sentence. You, the board members, are elected to listen to us and serve us as our representatives. Democracy means one person, one vote, and many voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go with, uh, see if there's no more speaker cards, ma'am. Thank you. Department head announcements, informational only. We'll start off with our CAO, Ray Espinoza.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we have an announcement out of our Elections Office. Like to invite Joe Paul Gonzalez, our Auditor Controller in Elections.
Good morning, Chair, Board of Supervisors. Uh, today we have a, a couple announcements in, in Elections, but I also have an introduction that I'd like to make to the board of the, a new, uh, recent member to our, uh, Elections Recorder, Clerk, and Auditor Staff, and that's Francisco Diaz. Uh, Francisco was with the county, uh, for five years and left, uh, for about 18 months, and, um, we were very fortunate that he, uh, you know, he saw the light and realized that, that, you know, working, uh, working with, uh, our department was, uh, what he wanted to do, and I'd like to ask Francisco to come up and say a couple of words.
So, I, first of all, I want to thank Joe Paul and Angela for letting me return. It wasn't easy. Uh, I, like Joe Paul said, left for a couple months. I was over in Stockton, and I can truly say I miss San Benito County. I miss the weather. I miss the people. So, I'm glad to be back, and thank you, Board Supervisors, for also granting me the opportunity to come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, now, um, we have Shayla, um, Funes Gonzalez, who's going to, um, she's our, basically our, the main impetus in our outreach efforts, and she's going to talk about a very special day today.
Good morning also. Today is National Voter Registration Day, and, um, in order to continue in helping the community to register to vote, re-register, we are going to be out at the Public Library today from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and it'll be in front of the library on the lawn area that's located to the right of it, and we're going to be helping there, like I said, the community re-register or register, or any questions that we may have, they may have, we are there to answer, and remember, the upcoming election is March 3rd, 2020. So, here's Angela and regards to information.
And so, Angela Curl, you know, everyone on the board, of course, knows Angela. Uh, she's the Assistant Clerk, Recorder, and Register of Voters. She's going to talk about why, um, party matters.
Thank you for letting us speak this morning. Um, I have put in the back a handout, why party matters in the 2020 primary election. As Shayla mentioned, the primary has moved from June to March, March 3rd, so we are actually in the middle of signatures in lieu of filing fee period, and the nomination period's going to open in just a few weeks, just in case you're a candidate or a soon-to-be candidate. Um, but why does party matter in San, in, uh, the March primary is because even though in California, regardless of what political party you're registered, um, typically you get to vote for any candidate that's on the ballot. You get to see all party candidates in California. However, it does not apply to president. So, if you're not registered in the party you choose to vote for, for president in the primary, that candidate will not appear on the ballot. So, with the outreach efforts that Shayla's doing, we're trying to encourage everyone to verify their current registration, which they can do on our website, or they can call our office. These handouts give you great information about why party matters. Additionally, AB 681 was passed by the legislature, and it is requiring that we send a notice to all resident, all, uh, registered voters of the county, um, informing them about, uh, not only why party matters, but about crossover voting, and that's when you're a no-party preference voter or nonpartisan. Some parties may allow you to cross over for the political party that you, you wish to vote for, but not all parties. Historically, um, there are several political parties that have, but some political parties have not allowed you to cross over. There also is same-day registration, so you could re-register in the party you want on Election Day, but think about what that means operationally for the Elections Office. We have to guess how many ballots we need in all those parties. So, what we're encouraging the community to do to ensure that we keep our cost as low as possible is make sure you're registered in the party you wish to vote for president, um, by the end of this year, and we'll be doing outreach efforts and mailings on that. And always feel free to call our office.
Thank you.
That concludes our announcements from the Elections Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, uh, further announcements from Department Heads?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Supervisor Jaime Dela Cruz, Supervisor Peter Hernandez, and I will be attending RCRC this week. Just want to let the board know. We have a scheduled meeting, uh, to talk about SB 1, Caltrans, Highway 25, and the, uh, roundabout, as well as the Highway 25 expansion. So, we have a scheduled meeting with, um, with their representatives there to discuss those key items for our items for our county. So we want to make sure we have advocacy and some pressure at the state, and we're requesting that with RCRC. Mr. Chair, we'd like to go ahead and make sure that item 20, well, item 33 is heard first on regular agenda due to scheduling and timing. We would also like to pull item 23 to be heard for another date, so that'll be off of consent. And one other announcement I wanted to make is that Mr. Harry Mavad Jonas had actually presented to your Board about, was it Sleenus Valley Grade Road, that there was some issues with potholing and the potholing repairs. Wanted to emphasize that with the Board, that there was a cement issue, and so there was some concerns with that. I wanted to make sure that the Board and the public knew that in October, we're going to be coming back to your Board to have a presentation on Measure G, SB 1, and any other funding that we have available for realignments of Seanauga Road, John Smith Road, and an overall financial overview of where we stand with our roads, and a presentation on Measure G. So I wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that. I'd go ahead and I'd like to pass this on to County Counsel. She has an announcement.
First of all, there was one correction on one of the closed session, I meant, consent agenda items. It's item number 26 in paragraph 5. It references the date of December 24, 2017, and that should be December 24, 2019. There was also a need for an urgency item, which would be potential litigation, unknown to potential plaintiffs pursuant to the 54956.9 D2 and E1. The Board has to make a motion that it came to the attention of the agency after the posting of the agenda, and it cannot reasonably wait until the next agenda meeting, and that's based upon the representations of staff that we need, learned of the need to place it in closed session on Friday after the agenda had been posted. So if the Board can make a motion to add that to closed session, if that's approved, then we can discussion it in closed session.
Mr. Chair, I move that we add this urgency, emergency item to the closed session agenda as stated by County Counsel.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
Mr. Chair, can you give me the numbers that you want us to pull out, Ray?
Oh, yeah, so it's, item 23 will be pulled completely and heard at another date. Item 33 will be heard, we're requesting that to be heard first item on regular agenda.
First, got it. Thank you. That was the confusion. Thank you.
And that's all that, did you have anything else?
Should we move it before the public hearing or after the public hearing? Because that would take another hour.
If it's okay, Mr. Chair, we would like to hear that first item prior to public hearing. It may take a bit on public, it's up to your, it's up to your Board on that, if we can, just due to timing on that particular item.
I have no problem with that. No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all the announcements we have.
Would the Board mind if we do Department Head announcements at the end? Or would you like to do them now?
No.
Is it in fine?
The Board announcements.
The Board announcements.
Yes, I'm sorry, the Board announcement?
Yeah, no problem.
Supervisor Patello?
Okay, I guess.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. We'll go on to the consent agenda. Any items from the, need to be pulled? I think four and eight from-
Yeah, I have eight as well.
Four, eight, anyone else?
Number two, Mr. Chair.
Four, eight, number two. Okay, well, what's the wish of the Board?
Did we have any from the public, Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, just want to make sure.
Four.
Oh, those are the public ones. I'm sorry, thank you. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the remainder of the consent agenda items that were not mentioned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
5-0. We will start off with number two, and I'll give the mic to Mr. Dela Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is more for the Board's information. This is a five-year project. It's going to cost close to half a million dollars once the entire process is implemented. And I have been having discussions with both Eggerd and Stewart about what are the benefits and what are the cost savings, you know, to the county, knowing that it's going to cost a half a million dollars. And so this is my last chance to ask those questions before the Board asks, makes a motion either to approve or not approve it. So again, what are the benefits to implementing and buying into this concept? And where are you, where are you going to show me the cost savings of a half a million dollars over five years?
So we have initially found a direct impact, mainly to save time. Currently, we work on the budget with myself, and we pull some staff in from the Administration Department to work on this. We believe that initially with that, we can, we can see about a direct savings of probably $10,000 per year. Additionally, in the, in the staff report, we've identified that this, currently, we are paying about $11,000 per year for the OpenGov software, so that's about a savings of 20, 21,000 per year. Each year, the software costs about $100,000. These are the initial savings that we've been able to identify. We're hoping that with the increased efficiency, the ability to integrate using this software, our budget, that we are going to save additional time for potential errors. Having this as an online budget, we think we're going to be able to save some time additionally for the CSAs, because we want to build a CSA portal through this software. And there's other, there's other benefits to actually having this software, the citizen engagement, the survey portal that is available through this, and becoming one of the first counties to actually have a fully integrated online budget system. We do think that we will be able to identify additional savings going forward, but at this time, this is what, where we're at with this, with this product.
Thank you. I feel that there are probably cheaper systems out there. I do understand and I do support open transparency and giving the public the opportunity to look at our budgets. I think that's important to our community, but at the same time, I don't feel that half a million dollars over five years is going to, it's something that we couldn't afford today. I do believe there's other, other technology ideas that we can implement to allow the public full transparency and access to our budget. And for those reasons, I will not support this motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I have one comment, is Ray, when you arrived here as the County Administrative Officer, our technology, our software was pretty much in the Stone Ages. What has that done to the morale? What has that done to the efficiencies? And what has that done to the county by you implementing and changing a lot of this software and upgrading it? And of course, it comes with a cost to the county. Can you please elaborate?
Yeah, it just, efficiency is really hard to quantify at times. I mean, I think many of us here in this office or in the chambers right now use these. And I think personally, each one of you probably can really relate to how efficient things are. It's at your fingertips, having data at the fingertips immediately, being able to be aware of safety issues and things that are actually occurring within our community in a timely manner. And so those, your Board gave us direction in February at the special Board Retreat that we had to continue to move forward with technology. This is just another stepping stone to be more efficient in our, in our county. When I first started, there was no network. We didn't have, some offices were not interconnected. We didn't have access to one single database that all departments were able to go to to put in the data. It was, it was very flat-file based. And so today, we're able to do budgeting, we're able to do a lot more with the current ERP, but this is just another enhancement tool to be even more efficient with budgeting. And I think it's important that the public can access CSA data, budgeting data, and have it at their fingertips, and that this is just one stepping stone to get there.
Thank you. Any other Supervisor Gillio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, Stewart and I had a meeting with the OpenGov people, got a tour of the software. I think it's a critical need for our future, to be frank with you, to allow everybody that's out here that's so interested in our meetings to actually just be able to click in and see our budget, see where their money, this is not our money, this is our community's money, and they can see it, they can watch it, they can see graphs, they can download it, they can massage it, play with it, and see where the money's going. We spend a ton of time right now on CSA questions. We'll get a call from CSA, for example, saying, hey, you know what, I noticed there was $3,000 spent, and, because it just, you know, our current system just says $3,000. So they'll call Stewart. Stewart will have to log into two different systems to try to figure out what it was, get back to them. I truly believe this will actually save us money in the long run, and then we're already paying for software that we won't have to pay for, because this is a, you know, kind of replace some of that stuff. So I will support this today, and, you know, we can keep, keep a close eye on it and watch it, and if it's not working out, then we can make other plans. But I support it for those reasons. Thank you.
Supervisor Patello?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I have a tendency to support this as well today. You know, we invested a lot into this ERP system, and we're, we're pot-committed, so to speak, building this network. And we started from really nothing, absolutely nothing, and we made significant progress. I understand from the staff that there's been some issues. I've heard them. But, you know, it's a matter of training and feeling comfortable with the tools that you have at your desk, and it takes a little bit of time. It also takes continuity of staff and, you know, and focus, and I think we have an obligation to provide the help and support training to have people more comfortable with this, you know, the ERP system and, but it's real, what you just said, integrated accounting system, that's key. We've had a lot of problems when I first started keeping track of, you know, what was financially going on at the Planning Department, for instance, and Public Works, and how, you know, the administration was able to, you know, keep track of things. And now, we want to focus on public information. The CSAs is really a top priority for us to get that, you know, those folks who are paying more assessment, more fees, taxes, so to speak, so they know how their money is being spent. So we have to keep moving forward. And so I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Any other speakers?
My only comments, Chair, is that after sitting down with Stewart and the OpenGov folks, they, they basically tried to emphasize that they're savings, and I think that's one thing we need to really consider. And I share the sentiment of Supervisor Dela Cruz, it's a concern when you're spending 500, you know, $500,000. But that's assuming a certain savings, right, because we're going to be more efficient. And I want to, you know, so I'm hoping to understand that efficiency down the road, because I know, at the end of the day, there should be maximized time, and there should be more productivity, and we should be able to measure that. So with all those considerations, if we can still, if we can anchor this cost to that, those numbers, then I could support it, but I definitely like to see reports on what that means.
I'll definitely be bringing back to the Board information on time spent with our staff. Additionally, I want to continue to give reports to the Board using this system so that you can see the efficiencies that we've created and the public outreach transparency portion of this. So we will definitely be bringing updates to the Board as we're working on this project, and we continue to, you know, increase the access to information on there. I'll definitely be making sure to bring updates to the Board.
Awesome. Thank you, Stewart. What is the wish of the Board?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I guess, wrap this up. I appreciate your comments, you know, to the Board, and I guess this is one of the unfortunate situations, where Supervisor Patello and I have been here for a long time, and we've seen these type of applications come before, before, before the Board, and there's some that says, you know, just trust us, we know what we're talking about, and those kind of things scare me a lot. I just, I just don't feel that, you know, that we explore this enough. This was introduced to me about a month ago without really having an in-depth discussion into it, and I just don't feel like we're kind of, I feel like we're kind of rushing into this, and there might be some other application out there that's cheaper and less expensive. I just don't feel, I just have a gut feeling in my stomach that we're not going to generate those savings, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any public comment? Any public comment? No speaker cards? Oh, Ms. West? Will you come up to the podium, please?
I'll admit, until this moment, I was ignorant about the situation. I definitely agree in upgrading the system, as Mr. Patello said. But I was wondering, how many bids did we get? I'm in kind to agree with, with Mr. Dela Cruz that if it's being rushed through, how many bids were gotten? How many, how many systems were looked over? What kind of a guarantee we have, do we have? Maybe you have all that information, but I was wondering how many people bid on this, and what was the reason for picking this particular company?
Thank you, ma'am. We'll leave that to Stewart.
Stewart.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a system that we're already working with. I have actually tried to work with our New World system, that's our actual finance system, and they don't have an option for me. So, you know, I've, we've made an attempt to look at some alternative options. We have Workiva, but I'm running into a lot of issues trying to integrate with Workiva. So this is kind of a sole source, because we've already been working with the product, and we are on the product right now, and we do see the benefits to continuing with that product that we're already currently have a contract with and using. But if it's the wish of the Board to go back and look at other, other products, I definitely can bring other options, if that's the wish of the Board.
Bring it back to the Board? What?
I was just going to say, if that were the case, that one of, one of the other items to keep in mind is that it takes a long time to do the budget. Last, last night, or I forgot what day it was, I was talking to Stewart, we're in, we're in September, and go, okay, we're going to have to start ramping up for budget for next year already. And we have to integrate this software and get it prepped and utilize this software for the, for the new budget year. So part of the reason why there is timeliness with this as well is there's a lot of work on the backend to integrate this for the new year.
If I could share a little bit, Chair, I mean, one of the things that I have concerns with, and I do share that sentiment Supervisor Dela Cruz, but with technology, it's not as easy as let's just pick up another company, because it all depends on the integration ability. And to a certain extent, even if it's lower cost, but the integration isn't the same or better, then you're, it's a waste of money at that point, you know, even if it is cheaper, because it's, there's other manual things you have to do to try to supplement what the whole goal of this, the whole, you know, the software itself is supposed to do. So if this is seamless as far as integration, then I know the pains that happen when you have to, you know, you have to sidestep the whole thing, and at that point, yeah, it's, it almost eliminates the opportunity for efficiency and maximizing productivity. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
I agree.
I have one more quick question for Stewart. Stewart, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe with OpenGov, since I've been here, we've been working with it with the CSA side of it, because you showed me some reports, and we just don't have it expanded out into our entire budget system, and is that accurate?
Yeah, that's correct, and this is the only product that I've seen that actually creates an online budget. So that's also a thing that I think will be the future, is actually having a solely online budget that is, you can manipulate, and you can change graphs, and you can, you know, go into. So, yeah.
Thank you. And one other point with this company is that they are, I don't want to say they're local, because they're, they're not in Hollister, but they are in, I believe it's Redwood City or very close by in the area, so it makes it convenient for them to come down, and if there's any troubleshooting, they're close by, and we don't have to pay, to fly people out from Texas or from another area. I've run into that with software integration in the past. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Bring it back to the Board. What's the wish of the Board?
Make a motion to deny.
Is there a second? Is there a second? See none? The-
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Or, Peter?
Aye.
Four, one. Now we'll go on to number four. This is to approve a new contract with the city of Hollister to provide animal control services, extending the term of the contract through July 31st. Before we get going on this, I'd like to thank everyone that participated in the talks. It was educational and we learned a lot about each other. And the way I look at it now is we have something in front of us, which I'm very pleased. So I'll let Dulce take care of this.
Thank you, Board. I'm just going to quickly summarize what the contract includes. And then if you have any questions that I could answer, go into. This contract is for the term of one year with, with it renewing month to month after. It's 55% of the city of Hollister's animal control expenditures annually. And there's an additional 2% administrative cost. So with that 2% administrative cost, we hope to obtain data where we can see how much service the county is actually using. But yes, it's been, it's been rough since I've been on board. I've been working on this contract for 18 months and I'm glad we finally have something before you. And then in addition, another, another item I do want to point out, the, the city of Hollister had passed a resolution that we, we need to, they need to have a contract no later than October 1st of 2019. So we've staffed and I want to really appreciate the, both supervisors who have been on the ad hoc to get this moving forward.
Thank you. Any public comment? We have one.
Good morning, Marty Richmond from Hollister. I encourage the Board of Supervisors to approve this contract. I was not a member of the negotiating team. I was not on the ad hoc committee. So, you know, I don't have any personal dice in the game. However, this is a group of unsung heroes on both sides, at the city and at the county, who take care of animal control. It's a difficult, difficult job, especially in our case because we have rural area, we have urban area. There've been some bumps in the road, I know that, between us, mostly concerning support after dark because the problem in that case is some of the public who really take offense if you're out there doing something they don't like. And so people worry about their personal safety. And so we have some rules. I hope we can get over those, those bumps and get, get it all solved. But I think this is an area where the Hollister Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and all the other departments that are involved have worked together very, very well for the good of the community. I urge the public to be responsible pet owners. If you're leaving the area and you're not taking your pet with you, don't just turn them loose and let them run around. Please. Get a hold of animal control and bring your pet in or bring it to the vet, whatever is appropriate, or to, to one of the adoption agencies. Most, most of the animal control issues, many, many of the animal control issues are pets. And we also have some wild animal issues. So we've worked together well. And the public doesn't, sometimes the public doesn't see what goes on, but it's an enormous effort on part of both the county and the city together. And I, I encourage you to keep it going. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
No more.
See none? We'll bring it back to the board. Any comment from the board members? We'll start off with Supervisor Patel.
Yeah, I want to thank the ad hoc committee as well on both sides. I think it's been a, a real task communicating this very, very short, very short contract. I think you have to go right back to work and figure out something that's more long-term. And, but, you know, I continue to, to think that there's some structural problems on how animal control is managed in the county. It's been a concern of mine since I've been on the board. I don't have any other, yeah, I'm done. Talk about the three minutes. There you go, Ms. West. We told him, he's done. Yeah. But finish my point is that, you know, we do have to figure out a way to try to work together even more efficiently, you know, between Hollister, providing the services and, and things happening in the unincorporated area. We got to kind of keep our eyes open for some other options as well. Thank you.
Supervisor Gilio?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Instead of going over a long dissertation of what happened, I'd just like to thank some folks. And I'd like to thank Dulce, start out with her. Dulce has been an amazing force in this and hasn't given up and stayed positive throughout the whole thing. And I really appreciate her getting this done. CAO Espinoza, Edgar Nolasco on the county side. And then, of course, the city side, we have Captain Reynoso, Lieutenant Olson, Chief Westrick, Cheryl Mullen, and Bill Rivera. And then a real big thanks to the sheriff and his department because he is extending his folks and his resources to help us take care of our animals in our community. And, and that's a really big thing for him to do and I really appreciate that. And then Captain Eric Taylor has been a force in this as well with, along right side, along with Dulce. And I wanted to thank Peter Hernandez as well, Supervisor Hernandez, for his leadership throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Mr. Chair, I just, I definitely want to thank not only Dulce, but Supervisor Gilio. A lot of the volume or the dialogue was, you know, especially with the background the Supervisor Gilio has was, was in the realm of policing. I gave respect to him definitely in handling a lot of the conversations because I understand that there's that sense of, of a, you know, of understanding with, with the other, those same departments, the police department, the sheriff department, and knowing how they think and ultimately what their, their concerns are. And I listened in. So I probably played more of a listening role, but my goal was definitely to support ultimately this contract moving forward. I know it's a tough, animal control is not an easy thing, but just the same, I, I know that it took very cool heads to come together ultimately and make this decision to move forward and, and supporting and respecting the sheriff's department because I know that they, they definitely had to, had to take a deep breath and said, what do we have to do to do, to do what's best for our community? And that literally was the attitude. And the police department, just the same, and said, let's, how do we make this work? And I just appreciate that they figured it out. And I so appreciate the sheriff's department for willingly being part of this conversation. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board.
I would love to make this motion to approve the animal control contract for one year and hopefully extend it month to month indefinitely.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five, zero. Thank you. We have a contract. We'll go on to another one that we're working with, the city of Hollister. That's number eight. That's a adoption authorizing the county administrative officer to prepare our necessary documents to the Board of Supervisors considering the permanently closed vacant and disposed of the portion of Nash Road. Like to have Supervisor Dela Cruz and Supervisor Hernandez talk about this, being that they were on the ad hoc committee and did such a great job.
No, no, I just, I actually want to thank our staff, Ray and Dulce, especially, you know, she has a new nickname without pay and that is the, you know, Bob the Accountant because she's the one that's out there looking out in the best interest of the taxpayers' money, especially when it comes to the county. Thank you, Dulce. We do appreciate all that effort. Mr. Chair, this is a long, long process and is still continuing. This is just the beginning. This is the first step. Let me provide some feedback for the, to the public before I continue. A while back with your blessing, the entire board's blessing, we decided to, to move, to move in a direction of building a sports complex out there behind the high school. It's taken a lot of time. It's taken a lot of effort. And we had several committees have met and, and we just couldn't pull it off. And one day I just called Ray and told Ray, Ray, we need your help. And ever since, when Ray has put a staff to it, it seems like just to put magic to it and it's moving forward. And again, I don't, I don't even know how many, how many times I want to say thank you to Dulce, Ray, and Edgar and everyone else who helped out, that now we're getting closer and closer and closer. So the first step that needs to occur for us to really vision a new sports complex out there is to work with the high school and the city Hollister and to have that piece of land be given to the, to the, to the county of San Benito. And some of the points that have to happen is Nash Road. Nash Road has to be closed. That's the first step. And so today is the first step on going in that direction. It's an opportunity for us to build a partnership with the city Hollister and the high school to build this sports complex for our kids, for our future generation, for our future grandkids. Well, today I have five and one day they'll be playing out there. And so this is pride, this is, this is joy and pride for me. And the first thing that we're asking for is that we use some of the money that the actually high school, in fact Supervisor Patel, you're a part of that committee. So are you correct? Yes, you were. Thank you. Part of that, part of that agreement in which we built a River Parkway around the high school, in consideration of some upgrades, the high school is going to give money to, to the county. And this is where Dulce plays a role. And she's always watching out for the county's money. And that's so nice to have someone like Dulce at the table, making sure that, hey, where's, where's the county's money? Where's the county's money? And so at the last meeting, we all agree that we're going to build a, a parking space. That's the first thing to do is to build a parking space in which both the, both the high school and soon to be built sports complex can, can use it. But right now, the reality is that the high school will be using that sport, that parking space. But in the near future, once we do have the sports complex up and running, we'll be using it too. So we're asking that, that, that we enter an agreement for, for the high school to construct a parking lot and share it with, with County San Benito, a long River Parkway pathway by using those dollars not to exceed $300,000. And I'll let Ray and Supervisor Hernandez provide input before we ask for a motion, Mr. Chair. Ray?
Supervisor Hernandez?
So I'll, I'll keep my comments shorter, but it has been from conception, from vision to ultimately now where we're at. And granted, as Supervisor Dela Cruz has mentioned, it's still, there's still a way, a lot of work to be done. But it's amazing to think that once the vision was captured by all involved, that it's moving forward. And, and it seems like everybody that's at the table is really, really excited. And I haven't seen this much dialogue as, you know, while me being the short-term, you know, eight-month supervisor. But still, I mean, it was amazing being part of the room where, where there's a lot of focus on getting this done. And without sharing all the details of the moving parts, closing down Nash Road is one element of it. There's still acquisition of property for us on the high school side. You know, the parking lots seem to be always the last thing that's considered and the greatest thing that's needed. Once you see the capacity and the fulfilling of, you know, a build out of a sports complex or anything like that that would draw a big amount of people, you know, a large amount of people. But, but one other thing that I definitely wanted to capture, I think it's really important, is that there, the value of this isn't, is for our community definitely and the benefits that it provides to our kids. But the economic development benefit that this brings is huge. And I know I remember Supervisor Medina being at, at the final build out of the high, the high school swimming pools and seeing the potential of just that element. Because it is, once you get tournament-type focus, then all of a sudden you're drawing larger crowds than you would have ever thought of. And to think that people would come to our community, spend their money, I mean, that is economic development. So, so anyways, long and short, that's my two cents, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I'll just add one thing, Mr. Chair. We're still, again, this is a process. This is the first step. But there's also some concerns about weed abatement in that area that we're working on, as well as currently, we have a study for San Benito and Riverside Parkway occurring right now. So it's an actual traffic study to look at mitigating the current bottlenecks and people going out in the, you know, for safety purposes. So as soon as we get that report back in the beginning of October, we'll probably be coming back to your board with some mitigation on that, as well as a lit crosswalk for that parking lot into, into the actual future facility that we're looking at. So with that, there's, again, it's a process and those are the, the next steps that you'll be seeing soon. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any public comment?
Marty Richmond?
Good morning. Once again, Marty Richmond from Hollister. First, let me say I share your goals. The goal of putting a sports complex out there, the goal of making it safer for people, the students across the street and everything. My one concern is the traffic issue. You know, we receive, as, as public servants, we receive many, many emails and phone calls from people who, who don't like something or like something. And sometimes, to be very honest with you, they just make a short complaint and they hang up. And, you know, they probably haven't done a lot of homework. But I received a very long and detailed email from someone with actual figures that they took by counting cars and so on and so forth. And the closing of Nash Road is going to, is going to bring some hardship concerning movement. So I am glad to hear that we're going to do mitigation measures. That was my primary reason for putting my name on this, on the comment list, was to make sure that we do a traffic study and mitigation measure and don't just kind of pass it off because we voted to close the road. And it'll be very important to the people who live there. Right now, right now, it's a problem. Road problems don't stay the same. They move, they move around. But right this moment, it's a problem and we can't fix it this moment because it takes a study and it takes mitigation measures. But I can't, I want to reinforce how important they are, that we do them and we do them properly and take whatever actions those do it. Now, there's always going to be a problem when there's a school. There's always going to be a problem during those three or four times a day when people are being dropped off, picked up, lunchtime, or special programs are being run. As you know, we have the same thing when we have a dance at the high school. You know, we either have to close the road or do something. So I encourage you to use the, use, take that mitigation study very seriously and to, even though it'll probably require some investment, to make that investment to improve the traffic flow so the people who live there don't see it as a burden to them. Thank you for your time. And again, I share your goals. I think we're going to, we're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any?
Steve Ward? Good morning, Board and good morning, community. My name is Steve Ward. I'm a professional umpire with baseball. I live on Nash at the first gated community next to the River Parkway. I only have a few comments. I know there are different levels of traffic studies that are available. Sequo, however, is very specific. When you shut down a road, they require trip-ins be measured. And I'm asking that the board consider trip-ins on both the River Parkway, Monterey West, and Powell Streets because these are the primary neighborhoods impacted. And once you receive those data back, that you consider mitigations at that point and not until then because you don't know what mitigations you're going to need until you do a proper traffic study. Number two, you made an agreement that you all signed that said this isn't going to happen until fall of 2021. So I'm going to ask you to slow this down a peg, keep your word, keep your written agreement. Don't rush this. There's a lot of us that are impacted. And number three, before I became a professional baseball umpire, I was in EMS. I responded according to Santa Clara County to a little over 32,911 medical calls. It's a lot of boo-boos and a lot of howies. And I'm a little nervous. Forgive my voice. But I can say that I'm concerned, but I would say I'm actually deeply concerned because of the EMS component of this closure is not being addressed properly. In the event of emergency, God forbid, something terrible happens, you've eliminated a lot of our resources, access in and out that we need to properly care for people down. And that's not in your proposal. And I hope that at some point gets looked at. It's, it's one of those, you can't unring the bell. And God forbid, we have that bell to ring. But at least give us a chance to help those if we need it. I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any additional speaker cards? Any additional speaker cards? Bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Patelio and then Supervisor Dela Cruz.
Okay, yeah, I think Mr. Ward brought out a couple of facts that I was mentioning. Being part of the 2016 agreement, I'm concerned about the timing of this. If we're in compliance of that agreement in full, you know, I'm looking at section I don't know if we're, we've done pretty much the, I think we should have the assessment of the traffic study before we do the road closure. We could still build the parking lot and continue to work with the park, but to kind of move forward with the road closure without having the mitigations and a plan to address them, I'm somewhat concerned with this.
The Board's not taking any action, just to make sure it's clear that for the public and everybody that we're not taking any action today to close the road. It's going to require a public hearing and we'll come back at a future date. This is just directing staff to work on that issue and dealing with the parking lot. So the road closure is going to be considered at a future meeting.
Okay, I think we have to be very, very clear for the, you know, benefit of the public that we should have the traffic study and proposed mitigations done before we close that road permanently. I think we have established good partnership with the city Hollister and the high school district and a pathway to, you know, for mutual benefit of the regional park development. And, you know, I thank the supervisors for working on that as actively as they are. They're on, it's a good project, but let's make sure we do this right for the entire neighborhood.
And I'll let Supervisor Dela Cruz kind of go over some of the things that you have, the questions you had.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we do appreciate it. You're correct Supervisor Patelio and members of the public, Nash Road is not going to close anytime soon. This is a process and the first step of the process is building a relationship and working together with the city Hollister and the high school. And one of the, we're trying to do the easy things, trying to hit the low-level trees, fruits first, and the parking space is the first one. The other one is we're going to do a study session that reflects all the traffic around there. And what would have happened if we closed Nash Road? Which roads will be impacted? But it seems from the early get-go, the road that most likely will be impacted will be San Benito Street from Nash Road to Union Road and that T-section of River Parkway. Yes, we're going to do all the studies, we're going to mitigate all those conditions first before even Nash Road is closed. Because even if the county pushes to close Nash Road, the city Hollister will still need to come up to the table and close their side. And the city Hollister specifically said that we're not going to close Nash Roads until we make sure there are mitigating conditions to the community and to that T-section specifically.
Okay, so this is not closed in Nash Road?
Yes, natural. But we do need your blessing today so we can continue the ball rolling. And then at the next meeting, we're going to ask, once the study is done, is to allocate funding to those traffic issues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Just to piggyback off Supervisor Dela Cruz, so the last meeting that we had, which was this last Friday, I believe, we had the city there, we had obviously the county and, you know, staff and the high school. And the conversation in a nutshell was very focused around those mitigation measures. That was a very, it was stressed over and over that we need to make sure that we address that T-section. I mean, it's actually within my district, so that's why I made sure I had that dialogue and included the reality that we had to address that issue because we knew that it would end up getting pushed back and the city obviously wouldn't be supportive of it if we didn't address those mitigation measures. So we are on that focus and we want to make sure that we do things in right order and that's priority one.
Just real quick, just for the record, we are not voting to close Nash Road.
Correct.
This will be done possibly at a later date, once mitigation measures have been completed. We are working on the parking lot and at this point in time, the parking lot only. So what is the wish of the Board?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion we adopt resolution authorizing the CEO to prepare all necessary documents for the Board Supervisors' consideration to permanently close, vacate and dispose of portions of Nash Road between West Street and Monterey Street and authorize the Chair to sign it. And two, authorize and direct the CEO to negotiate and execute the terms of a share use agreement with San Benito County High School District for construction and share of the parking lot on the high school campus connecting to the River Parkway bypass road to be funded by the county in the estimated amount not to exceed $301,000, $301,000. Authorize the CEO to approve the funding payment for construction of the parking lot.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now we'll go on to...
Item 33?
Item 33?
Or 32, excuse me.
32 or 33?
32, my apologies. Oh. There's a typo in the system.
Landfill, right?
It's the landfill item.
Item 33, discussion and approval of the Second Amendment to Landfill Operating Agreement with Waste Solutions Group of San Benito LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to go ahead and invite up Michael Collantuno. He's been our, the individual that we have hired to help assist us with drafting this contract before you. And I'd like him to go ahead and present to you key points on this particular item.
One second before, you know, I just want everyone to understand that this contract has been looked at, has been discussed, has been going on for roughly two, roughly two years, a little bit more. I came on board two years and eight months ago and this is the first thing I was looking at. So by all means, please understand that there's been a lot of time, a lot of back and forth, a lot of headaches. And it's been a document that, you know, I've read too many times and I've heard too many times. So please, it's not something that we came up with overnight. There's been a lot of research put into this contract. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michael Collantuno. I'm a local government lawyer and I represent cities and counties around California. And I've been helping San Benito on a number of projects over the last few years. And starting about last November, you asked me to take on this project. I have sort of three things to talk about. One is the relationship generally with Waste Connections. Two, the broad deal points that are in front of you. And then lastly, the Chair has asked that I be careful to point out the changes that were made in the last 24 hours. It's not common, it's not uncommon that when you do a big complicated agreement, that all of the principals read it at the last minute and come up with questions. And so you get lots of changes in the last 24 hours and that happened here too, although none of them are of concern to me and I'll unpack them. So starting more broadly, the county owns the John Smith landfill. The county used to operate the John Smith landfill and has contracted with Waste Connections, Inc., which is a large corporation traded on the New York Stock Exchange, to bring their expertise and quite frankly, their capital to operate your landfill. The agreement that we reached a few years ago, front-loaded some consideration for the county, but over the longer term, didn't seem that good a deal for us. So we were looking for an opportunity to change that balance. That opportunity came to us when Waste Connections saw a need to expand the landfill. They're filling it up quite rapidly, there needs to be an expansion. Getting an expansion requires a lot of lawyers and consultants because you have to get permits not only from the county but from state agencies as well. And they came to us and said, we need your cooperation in order to achieve that expansion permit. And we said, have we got a deal for you? We'll certainly help you with that expansion to continue to meeting the needs of our community, but there's some changes that we want to see in our relationship as well. So that's how we came to this agreement today. So with that, let me tick off the major deal points in this agreement. First, in the existing contract is a promise that Waste Connections will always maintain 15 years' capacity in the landfill for the waste that San Benito County generates. So for our community, we've got a 15-year running ramp. The reason for that is it could take that long to get a new landfill in place. They're not terribly happy about that 15-year promise because it means there's capacity they can't sell at profitable rates to folks outside our county. And our answer to that has been, too bad, we're hanging on to that promise and we did. Secondly, they're going to do the work to get the permitting for the new landfill and we're going to cooperate. Thirdly, they've made a new promise to engage in our community and spend some money doing it about recycling issues and issues at the landfill. They are going to continue to cooperate with us in our compliance with the state laws which require all local governments to reduce the amount of waste that goes to landfill by recycling and the like. There is an existing provision in the agreement that gives them a cost of living adjustment on the compensation that they receive for operating the landfill. And while we're maintaining that promise, they're temporarily suspending it during the period that we're going to be working together on the permits. So that's an economic concession to the county that's quite valuable.
What is the possible income that we would, or I should say, the expense we will not receive?
There, this is payment to them that will not go up for the period of how long they're chasing the permits or July 1st, 2023.
And our COLA has been averaging what per year?
That's not a number I have at my fingertips.
Ninety?
It's approximately $200,000 a year, approximately.
A year, so we're looking at $600,000 roughly?
That's a meaningful number.
Excuse me, and then there's a compounding on that in the future as well.
Yes, sir.
To that point, Mr. Chair, when you see it in the new contract, the COLA is, there's a minimum guarantee of 2% and a maximum of 6%. So in booming economic times, we just saw 4.5% COLA to Recology based on fuel indexes and those things. So it could be more significant than what we've seen in the past. So it could be 2, 3, 400,000 dollars per year.
Yes.
One of the county's concerns is that, as folks may know, landfills produce methane gas, so do cows, but landfills produce them. And methane gas is an economical, is a valuable economic commodity if you can capture it and put it to use. And one of our concerns is that they have not done that. And so we have a promise that says they're going to figure out whether it works. And if they conclude that they can't put in an economic project, we can do our own study. And if our study shows it's economic, they either have to do it or get out of our way. So there's a glide path to get a landfill gas recovery project, another economic opportunity for our community. Many pages of this agreement, starting at page 10, extending all the way to page 29, about half of the bulk are what the Board members and I have been referring to as boilerplate, which is standard provisions that lawyers include in agreements to enforce, make them enforceable. This has been very important to the county. I'm not going to bore you with the details, but we want to make sure that we get the benefit of our bargain and that if they don't deliver, we can do something about it. And so we spent a lot of time arm-wrestling over these provisions and I am pleased to say that we got what we needed and that this is a much stronger contract in terms of our ability to enforce it. Page 29 is the next major economic promise, is that if they get the expansion and are in the business of using our land to make money for other people's trash, there's what's called a landfill depletion fee. You can think of it as we're selling out capacity in our landfill and we're going to get something for it. That landfill depletion fee is in place now, but this promise requires them significantly increase it at the time they permit the new facility. On page 30, at paragraph four, there is a payment to the county of $200,000 per year until they give up on their expansion, achieve the permits, or have paid $2 million. So it's 200,000, probably a three or four-year period before they have permits. And that money is discretionary money that the county can use as it thinks best.
Let me interrupt you there, sorry. The 200,000 you're speaking of, I believe...
Oh, you're right, you're right.
...I'd like to see is to roads along the route.
You're right, thank you, Mr. Chair. This 200,000 is restricted to improving the landfill haul route. And that's the path from the regional highways all the way out to the landfill. We're also talking about working with them to change that route in a way that will put less of the burden on our county roads and put us in a position to improve those roads because I think folks know they're...
Repeat that one more time?
We're also in discussions about adjusting the landfill route so that they choose a shorter path to the landfill and that fewer of those roads are paved by San Benito's budget and more of them are paved by California's budget.
Thank you, sir.
So that we're at work on that too, but that's not yet reflected in this agreement. That's a side discussion we're having. So thank you for the correction, Mr. Chair. Paragraph five, one of the big concerns of our community has been that the rate that locals pay is higher than the rate that is charged to, under contracts, to bring in municipal waste from places like Gilroy and Morgan Hill. That was a hard problem for us to challenge because there's a lot of money at stake, but the Board made it clear that it was their single largest priority for these negotiations. And we got a reduction of the tipping fees that locals pay when they visit the landfill and we got a cap on future increases in those fees that's going to be the lesser of the consumer price increase or the average increase at two comparable landfills, one in Marina and one in Salinas. So that was an important economic provision of the agreement. Page, paragraph six, on page 31, they're going to buy the site for...
Can we jump back real quick on that? So the, one of the changes that the community will see or the public will see that's not in the agenda packet is, it was originally going to be capped at 110% of the average of the Marina landfill and the Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority landfill. And in some last-minute conversations and negotiations, we were able to drop that down to just the average of a two, so there's no 10% kicker above what other communities are paying. At some point, we may reach what other communities are paying, but right now, we're far less than, for our local people only.
And you're being too modest. It wasn't just last-minute conversations, it was last-minute, arm-twisting by you for which I'm grateful. Paragraph six is the hauler, WCI, is going to purchase the site of the new landfill at their expense. We will end up owning that land, although owning land that used to be a landfill is not necessarily the most valuable real estate on the planet, but they sometimes have uses for things like gas extraction, for park and rec resources. Those things you can put on top of a closed landfill that are valuable to have. So that's important to us as well. Paragraph seven provides for an immediate increase in the tipping fee revenue to the county of a dollar a ton. And that will last until they give up on the expansion, they obtain the expansion, or three years out. So that's a buck a ton for up to three years. I don't have at my fingertips an estimate of how much that is, but I think it's a pretty meaningful number. Paragraph eight is a temporary increase in the landfill depletion fee. I told you that if and when they permit the new landfill, there's a schedule of increased landfill depletion fees, which is effectively a purchase price to us for capacity in our landfill. This is one that gets us from here to there. It's 90 cents a ton during the period that they're permitting it. They are unhappy with the intersection of John Smith Road and Fairview Road because they can only bring their trucks in from one direction. And we have, they have agreed to give us 2 million bucks to try to realign that intersection so they can bring in trucks from both directions. We may or may not spend the 2 million in that way for two reasons. One is we may change the route so that we don't need both turning movements. Secondly, we may find out that 2 million bucks isn't enough to really do what's needed there, in which case, we won't spend the 2 million that way. And if we don't choose to change that intersection, we can spend the 2 million on other improvements to the haul route. So the folks who have to put up with those roads out there that have been ground down by the trucks should know that some meaningful relief is coming.
Since you're on that, page 31?
Yes, sir.
Number seven?
Mm-hmm.
Additional road impacts?
Yep.
It's a dollar per...
Dollar a ton.
Yes. Can you elaborate on that, please?
What the paragraph says is, starting with the signatures, which should come shortly, they're going to pay us an additional buck a ton for the waste they accepted at the landfill. And they'll pay it until they give up on the expansion, get their permits, or three years run by. And it says the contractor shall be permitted to increase the out-of-county Packer rate, meaning the rate that the haulers from Gilroy and Morgan Hill pay, as necessary to recover the revenue. There's no statement here as to how the money is to be spent. The section label says additional road impact payments. But the body of the section does not tie the Board's hands. So the Board will have discretion on how to appropriate these funds. They may choose to use them for road impacts, they may choose, that's up to the five of you.
And I was just going to say, and if the Board, I mean, this is for road improvements and road maintenance, really that's the essence of it, but if your Board wants to put some tighter language in there, we're more than willing to make sure that that's in there for that.
And my advice is that you should not put restrictions on how you spend money in your agreement with the waste hauler. It's none of his business how you spend your money. If you want to make a commitment to your people, just do that by an appropriation.
I would bring back this in October meeting to discuss some of these other things and...
Absolutely. How you spend your money is very much your business and...
I just wanted to go on record, letting people understand that there are monies that are allocated strictly to the roads.
Sure.
Thank you.
Paragraph 10, when they do the expansion, one of the key issues will be the environmental review. The county is responsible to do that environmental review, they're responsible to pay for it. They're quite nervous about it because what CEQA does, as you probably know from experience, is it studies potential impacts, figures out how to mitigate them, and then requires the project opponent to do that mitigation. And that mitigation can be very, very expensive. And the hauler was quite concerned, not the hauler... And the hauler was quite concerned, not the hauler, Waste Connections, I keep thinking of them as just a trash hauler, but they're doing a lot more than that here. Waste Connections is worried about what that's going to look like. So we've reached an agreement that's fairly common, where they're going to hire a consultant to write the environmental impact report. And they're going to pay us to hire a consultant to look over their shoulder. And at the end of the day, it's up to the board to determine whether the environmental document is right. What the ERR is very likely to do is change the economics of the expansion. And that means we're very likely to be sitting down with Waste Connections again in about six months to do the Third Amendment to this contract. And personally, I don't think that's a bad thing. It may be boring for you to have to talk about the landfill again and more, but it gives us another opportunity to continue balancing this relationship in a way that meets our community's needs. So CEQA is something I don't want to dwell on today, but it is coming back. Paragraph 11 on page 33 is that promise we talked about, to continue negotiations about the haul route. That's everything in here that's the basic deal points. Now what I want to do, as the chair requested, is go back through the agreement and point out to you the changes that were made in the last 24 hours. First, there's an additional recital, a whereas clause on page one that I drafted, that is intended to protect the county's board's discretion to spend the money under the agreement. By avoiding a claim that somehow the money we receive from the landfill is a tax on the landfill, or needs voter approval in some way, this is a common franchise term, and we're just providing legal language to protect it. We have added a definition of environmental laws that just got dropped out in the drafting. That's a standard definition, that's on page two. There are some typos that are fixed on page three. They were inconsistent in our drafting, as between the label second amendment effective date and amendment effective date, so we fixed that on page four. And you'll see that that, those dates, labels change throughout the agreement. There are those kinds of sort of unimportant drafting clarifications on page five and six. On page 10, in paragraph J, we filled in the date. We knew that was supposed to be three years, but we filled it in to avoid having to talk about it later. On page 12, they had capitalized some words suggesting they were defined terms, but they're not defined terms. We're using common, ordinary dictionary definitions, so those are lowercase now. There was some inconsistent labeling of the beneficiaries of indemnity promises, and we cleaned up those labels on pages 14 and 15. There's another clearing up definitions on page 17. We filled in the addresses for notice to the county at pages 19, something we almost always do at the end. Minor cleanup of the notice of breach language. The change on page 22 is intended to make it clear that the rules for how we enforce their broken promises are exactly the same as how they would enforce our broken promises. And that's typical, we don't intend to break any promises, of course. On page 23, we've been having an argument with them at the table, a friendly professional argument, but an argument nonetheless, about if we sting them with a liquidated damages, which is like a parking ticket, for a minor violation of the agreement, not getting us the data that we need in the right form on the right date for us to get it to the state, we can fine them $250 or $500. They really wanted to appeal all of those to your board, and we really didn't want to let them. Because these are supposed to be fast, cheap, efficient ways to get their attention about, not critical, but important matters. And if we've got to do the staff work to bring it to your board, and you've got to take time on days when you've got other things to talk about, it makes it a less useful remedy. So we basically said, no, we won't do that. But I suggested, look, if we sting you for more than $10,000 in these $500 fines in a year, and you want to come talk to the board about it, the minute we go over $10,000, you can come talk to the board about it. So it was a way to balance their desire to make sure that staff's not being unreasonable, and our desire to make sure they're not wasting your time, and making it hard for us to hold them accountable. I think that was an appropriate balance. On page 26, there's some minor cleanup to make the, what's called a force major clause, which says if there's a hurricane in Texas and I can't get a checkout that day, because my offices are in Texas, we can get the checkout the next day. That's a fairly common paragraph. I just wanted to make the language completely reciprocal, so that we have a hurricane in San Benito, and we can't get a checkout, we got the same protection that they have. On page 30, they also wanted to be able to appeal late fees, and we've been saying no, and saying no, and saying no, and saying no, and they finally took it out. So that's what that strikeout on page 30 is about. Now, after your red line got to you yesterday afternoon, there was one more language change, and that's what appears on page 30. And this is the language that says, "We're getting lower tipping fees for our residents, and we're getting an inflation cap. In exchange for that, we've agreed not to use a power that we had under the agreement to lower their Packer rates." And the process is, they come in and justify a rate, your board approves a rate, and they collect that rate. Under your contract, you could lower that rate without a reason. I've never seen that before, and you only did it once because, quite frankly, you were in tension with them and needed to get their attention. It was the equivalent of a kick in the shins. And we didn't want to give up the ability to kick them a shins without other tools. I have 10 pages of tools now, so it makes sense to give it up, but we still needed the protection that we've talked about, which is that inflation cap, where they either, they can raise these rates up to the CPI, or the average of two competing landfills, whichever's less. And the agreement had been 110% for most of these negotiations since I became involved last November, and we got it down just yesterday to 10%. So this is new language that you've seen. And then there's one more sentence that I added at 10 o'clock last night, to make it very clear that this language about our control over tipping rates does not give them any power to set rates. We have the power to set rates, we just can't lower them once we've set them. And that clarification has been agreed to them as well. Let's see, the cleanups on page 31 are all these minor definitional labels, there's no substance there. And with Mr. Gilio's help, we found out actually where the Seventh Adventist School is, thank you very much, and cleaned that up. They've agreed to try to protect the school from traffic of incoming out-of-county trucks when kids are being dropped off and picked up. And with that, Mr. Chair, I think I've covered the three points I've promised to cover. If there are questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yes, sir. On page seven--
Page seven. Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure that when they're speaking of, it's the last paragraph--
Yep.
--contractor should use its reasonable direction in selecting the litter collection subcontractor. So basically, they will be collecting some litter off of John Smith Road?
Yes.
We want to make sure that it extends to the whole entire John Smith Road. John Smith Road ends at Santa Ana Valley.
Yep, it does, it does. And I should, you know, this got tucked into another paragraph, and it should have had a separate label. If it had a label, I'd have mentioned it to it. So it's good for you to point it out. This is a new promise that the county negotiated in the last week or so, to do something for the folks who live out by the landfill, to clean up the litter. And it's a $40,000 a year commitment to get contractors outside to pick up the litter.
And just so they know, we will hold them accountable for that. So I want to make sure that they understand that. The other one is--
Chair, I had a question.
Can I finish?
Oh, go ahead.
Is it about this?
Yeah, it was, well, it was on the previous side. Basically, the waste.
Go ahead.
So basically, I remember the last conversations we had, that there would be fees, right, if they didn't have a tarp?
Yes.
And those fees, we talked about, was it possible for us to capture them to the benefit of that, those areas?
Yes.
And this was the promise that resulted from that discussion. We started by saying, look, you're going to fine people $50 if they show up at the landfill without a tarp over their load. And we would like to capture that money and use it to clean up the litter.
Yes.
And what the hauler said to us is, that's intended to get people's attention, and it is going to get people's attention, and we don't expect to see very many tarped loads, so there's not going to be a lot of money there. If you want to do something meaningful about litter, we need to spend some money on it. And that's how we ended up with this promise.
Oh, God.
Then the other one was, page eight--
Yes, sir.
4.12.
Yep.
Wayne, and incoming waste reports?
Yep.
There's been a lot of people asking me, well, how do we know that what they're reporting is correct? So this here in the paragraph pretty much states that they are looking at, where we do receive the data that substantiates what they actually brought in.
They have to use industry-certified equipment and pay for it. We look over their shoulder, and the state looks over our shoulder. Cheating on volumes going into landfills is a fairly big deal. And so there's lots of people checking.
That's it for me. Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, I just want to thank Michael Colantino for his really thorough work on developing this contract. I think we've been working on it for more than two years, to be honest with you. It was, I was chairman last year, I was hoping to have this contract ready to go at this time last year. But, you know, this is very complex, it's long-term, it has to be done right. And I think our consultants and our lawyer outside council, the committee, I want to thank Supervisor Gilio, he really pushed the ball over the goal line in the last week or so on some very fine details. And, you know, I really want to thank him for his attention to this. I also want to really thank Waste Connections. You know, it was a long, strenuous negotiations, many meetings, and pretty stressful at times. But we're here. I think this is great, this is a great agreement for the county going forward, far superior to what we had in the past. It's a benefit, you know, a number of roads and public services, so I'm very happy to have been part of it.
Thank you. Supervisor Dela Cruz, any questions?
No, just--
Supervisor Hernandez?
I just wanted to thank Supervisor Gilio and Mr. Colantuno and Ray for the process. I know it was very thorough.
So we'll finish off the comment up here with Supervisor Gilio.
I wanted to thank everybody for their efforts and their times on this. The administrative office, county council, Michael Colantino, he's a very professional, skilled attorney, who definitely made Waste Connections uncomfortable and pushed hard. But I want to also thank Waste Connections for negotiating in good faith and earnest. We're in a current deal that I would say the whole board, without insulting anybody from the past, agrees that we're not in the best situation we're in now. And I think this contract remedies a lot of the issues that we had in our old contract. And moving forward, it's not a perfect agreement, but it is an agreement that I believe I can support today and live with. And I really want to thank Supervisor Patel. He brought a lot of history and knowledge to this process. He's been here how many years? 16?
It's getting close.
Yeah, so to have that knowledge right next to us while we're negotiating, and to be able to recall stuff that happened, you know, five years ago, that I would have no idea, that, well, why are we going down this road? It was a critical piece, and I think we all came together as a team to make the best deal that we could possibly make for the county for the future. Thank you, guys.
Any public comment?
Yes, Marty Richmond.
Marty Richmond again, and it's still good morning, and from Hollister. So I'm two-for-two this morning. I think I'm two-for-two. I have four, total of four yellow cards in, I want to be four-for-four before I leave, okay? I'm hardly a newcomer to this issue. As you, as most of you know, when I used to write columns in my spare time, I wrote many times about the issues concerning the landfill contract, the old landfill contract one, and how unhappy I was with that contract, and thought we had missed the boat. I think you caught the boat on this one. I don't think you missed the boat. I'm glad to see a contract which I think recognizes the value of that landfill, and the value has gone up, as the price of transportation has gone up, the value of our landfill and its location has gone up. You've taken in consideration road repair, road, and I am really glad to see about the trash, the pickup of the, anything that had blown off the trucks when they go by. In spite of all my complaints about the contract, I never had any complaints about the actual operation of the landfill. I am very impressed when I go up there. And I typically go up there on a hazardous waste Saturday, when you get to drop off your hazardous waste, run by Recology, but you get to see the facility. And so you go through, and you look, and I look with a jaundiced eye, to say, how's it look? Does it look professional? Is it clean? Is it well-kept? Is it organized? And I've always found it so. And every time I drive away, I go, boy, it's worth a lot more than we're getting for it. But now, I'm glad to see that you've taken great strides in recognizing the value today and in the future, and the way you've structured this contract. I've read it carefully, I didn't have the last 24-hour changes. I'm glad your representative, your lawyer, has gone over them. And by the way, he's not allowed to be in on any negotiations with the city. We're barring him right now. Okay, immediately.
Nix out, animal control.
I want that understood before I go any further.
Marty, I know I'm not allowed to interrupt public comment, but you asked for his card, and you can't have his card.
Yes. Thank you so much for the, thank you. And I intend to finish before the buzzer, because it drives me crazy, too. So thank you for your time, and we're going to put him on retainer as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. West?
And I did--
Ma'am? I did institute--
Thank you. Well, just to clarify some of my ignorance about this project, how much trash are we processing from other counties, if any, to fill this extra land? How much trash are we taking from other counties now for our landfill in San Benito County? And secondly, I was surprised to hear, although it's not unusual, that the board has approved this corporation to pay, not only pay for the environmental impact report, which is important, they'd be charged for it, but to also choose the company that's going to do it. It seems to me this is like the fox guarding the hen house, we're paying the fox to guard the hen house. So I would suggest that we get a neutral organization, and there are plenty of them out there, to do the environmental impact report. And the last comment is that methane gas is about 80% worse than ordinary CO2 as far as causing global warming. It's highly toxic, and it increases the heat very rapidly of the atmosphere. So I'm wondering what can be done to mitigate this? Because this is very important. And I'm very concerned about small counties like ours becoming a dumping ground for other more, bigger counties with bigger populations that want to get rid of their trash. We're already drowning in trash. So the contract, obviously, you've gone over it very carefully, but those are two questions, the environmental impact report and the methane gas.
I can't answer to the methane gas, I will let someone else take care of that, because I'm not up on that. Number two was the environmental impact report. There are two simultaneously, simultaneous reports that will be done. They are doing one, and then we do have a third party that is nothing to do with anyone else. So we do have that. There is two different parties. Is that correct there, Ray?
That is correct.
So the fox is not guarding the hen house in this case, we're letting them run their own, we'll see the results. We have contracted an independent third party doing it for us, and they're paying for that also. So we'll see the two reports, and then we'll make a decision based upon that. The first one, my numbers may be off a little bit, so correct me if I'm wrong, about 20% of our landfill is in county?
Yeah, if I recall, and we might be able to get--
800 tons a day currently is--
Currently, yeah.
So 20% is county and 80% is out of county. In county.
So our land is being used to make money for the--
Yes, ma'am.
Dumping other people's trash.
Okay, we got to, okay. Any other comments?
My name is Mary from Aromas, Mary Shaw Coron. I wanted to address the methane issue. I think it's a really important issue, given that we know climate change is getting to be a very, to be really a crisis. And what I wanted to-- And what I wanted to mention is that there are a number of communities in this state that are already capturing methane. I remember talking to someone who was at Davis, and that was what he specialized in. Five years ago, he was helping the landfill there capture methane, using that as an energy source for, I believe, the city of Davis. I think it created a lot of energy for them, and so they ended up saving a great deal. So I think this is something that, you know, this was five years ago when I spoke to this gentleman. I can forward the info to whoever here is appropriate.
Please, please. That'd be great.
So anyway, I just think that this county could really benefit from that. I think Davis actually used it to, as a heating source for their city. They were very innovative. Five years ago, they went solar. And I think they saved a huge amount of energy for their city by doing things like capturing methane as well as going solar. I think that our community, especially if we're collecting so much garbage for other communities, you know, we could charge them for this, you know, the cost of capturing that methane. And it could perhaps benefit our city to use the methane as a source for maybe heating for our city buildings or county buildings, I should say. So please, please look into that. Thank you very much.
Who should she send the information to?
Send it to the administration.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other speaker cards? Bring it back to the board. Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, I know when we were in negotiations that the methane issue does come up, and it's addressing our current contract. At some point, when it becomes economically feasible, we would partner with Waste Connections to utilize that gas. Right now, we do, there are pumps and a collection of methane. And I don't know, Paul wants to correct me if I'm wrong, but it's just burnt off right now. And we're required to collect that methane, and we've invested quite a bit of money from the franchise fees that we do get to partner collecting that gas. So, you know, it's under, you know, scrutiny from the state requirements as well, but someday in the future. And we're looking for that, too. We would love to take advantage of that and not let that resource get away from us.
Bring it, any other questions for the board? Is there, what's the wish of the board?
I'll move that we adopt the contract titled Second Amendment to New Landfill Operating Agreement with the changes that were presented to us today by our council as well as presented to us in the Red Line Agreement.
And that's approving it subject to finalization of all the exhibits, which are still being finalized, such as legal description, et cetera.
And now we'll add the language from our county council. Thank you.
Let's do a roll call, please, or vote. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes.
Supervisor Patel?
Yes.
Supervisor Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gillio?
Yes, sir.
Myself, yes. It's a five-zero. We're going to take a quick break and then come back and.
Corrected general plan figures, 3.2 through 3.6. For the record, we want to make sure that we incorporate by reference some transcripts that have been prepared for the July 2015 Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors meetings, during which time the general plan update, EIR, and the 2035 general plan itself were presented to, excuse me, the Planning Commission and the board. Those transcripts reference the discussion about Livestock 101 being designated as the fourth node and the removal of 156. So it's important to note for the record that we were incorporating those transcripts by reference this morning. Then there are five sequel resolutions with findings. Those are included in your packet. There's the resolution. Then attached to each of the sequel resolutions, you'll find, excuse me, a copy of the addenda that was prepared for each of the five items. And then there's also a set of findings that has been prepared that's attached to each of the separate resolutions. Excuse me. Then after the sequel resolutions have been adopted, then there would be adopting an ordinance to amend Title 25 to incorporate the new zoning district, the Regional Commercial C3 zoning district into the code. And then lastly, by separate ordinance would be to consider the rezoning of each of the four nodes, Betabell, State Route 129, Rox Ranch, and Livestock 101. And to support that, we just wanted to briefly go over the materials that were included in the packet this morning. We did prepare a brief supplemental staff report primarily to provide a response to some of the questions, the issues, concerns that were raised at the September 10 meeting to deal with those and provide information where more detailed information can be found in the various documents that have been prepared for this project, of which there are a lot. I mean, there's a lot of information that's been prepared, Mr. Chair, for this project. And we feel like we've covered all the bases, and it's a matter of knowing where to find the information. So there's also a resolution for adopting the corrected general plan figures. Then there's resolutions for, as we said, sequel resolutions and findings for each of the various actions, the five actions, as well as then the draft ordinances. And so what we've listed here for your benefit is the resolution numbers and the ordinance numbers that go with each of the five actions in terms of adopting the code and the four rezonings, just so that you can see how they line up. And with that, Mr. Chair, were available for questions, particularly if there were any questions that you feel like we didn't cover in the supplemental staff report or anything that's left over from September the 10th that you'd like clarification on. As I say, we have Michael Gross here. We have the slides we presented last time. And we actually have a few slides prepared that respond to some of the issues from September 10.
Okay.
With that, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Would you like to start off with public comment? Public comment?
Yes. Marty Richmond?
I thought it was three strikes and you're out.
Marty Richmond again from the city of Hollister. And again, I guess I was a busy person before I was on the city council because this is not new to me. This, you know, I was involved in this before I was on the city council. I supported it when your general plan was written. And I supported it with the idea that the general plan would have protections in there for the local views and environment and so on and so forth. And those protections were put in there. And I remember when they were put in there, and I know where they are in there. And I believe. and I know where they are in there, and I believe you're obligated to comply with them. So I believe that we can do this, and we need to do this. We need the income. You know, it's very easy for me, you know, I see it all the time. People go, "Well, you know, I don't want this near me, and I don't want this near me," and it happens all the time with all kinds of things, not just nodes on the thing. But then they also want all the benefits, and somehow or another, they missed, skipped a step in between where we have to fund it somehow, okay? And, you know, I go down to the basement and I print up some money when I need it, but the IRS often objects when I do that. So we have to find a way to do that. Is money the answer to all our problems? Of course not. But we are often the slave of the state and federal government who tells us what we have to do and what we have to have, and it makes our day-to-day operations a lot more expensive. I always point out what happened when they went to clean diesel. Everybody supports it. Everybody goes the out. We did, but we had to throw away a bunch of generators and buy new ones, and they didn't give us the money to do that. We had to come up with that. So actually, much of the funding that we use in the county and in the city actually is to improve the day-to-day life of the people who live here and work here, and their clean air, it's not cheap, so we have to do it. So I'm in support. The only thing is, I pointed out before, is I don't think you should, when you actually go to developing these, I don't think you should try and do four at once. I do not think it's reasonable to have four of these trying to be in competition with each other. I think you ought to pick the best two to start with, and the competition of finding the right one will get you a better deal also, rather than just saying, "Oh, yeah, we got four. We're going to develop all four." So once you get them zoned properly, I think you should take whatever action you need to restrict the development to two, the two best ones to start with, and then look at them in five years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Robert Robe?
I live at 340 Dante Robus. What a blessing it is to live in this county. While I understand and appreciate the need for the county to continue to strike a balances between economics, sustainability, rural character, and the quality of life for its residents and tourists, and I understand the need to implement the county's 2035 general plan, land use goals, and policies. I appreciate all the time, money, and effort that has gone into this process. I'm still feeling a little bit rushed. While this may seem like a no-brainer for economic development, this one decision is going to stay with us for a lifetime, and I suggest that you remember that the county has 12 other potential regional commercial nodes to consider for rezoning economic development. I have a few questions regarding the transcripts. 101 Livestock property on July 1, 2015, Attorney Dan DeFreeze, representing 101 Livestock as a planning commissioner, recommended that 101 and 156 be removed as a possible regional commercial node and instead asked that the 101 Livestock property that he represents be considered for an alternative C3 node. My question to staff, specifically legal counsel, could this recommendation be by the planning commissioner, who is also attorney of a landowner, 101 Livestock, be considered a conflict of interest? I don't know the answer to that, but I did see another video where Supervisor Patello did excuse himself from voting on a potential road project that was adjacent to his personal property so that it would not be misconstrued that he was trying to sway anyone into developing a new road into his county's coffer, excuse me, a new road next to his property. I bring this up for two reasons. One, because to me, seems like a red flag, and I would not want the county to be sued if the decision were to go forward and it would be found that this node never should have been happening in the first place. Two, 101 Livestock is already a commercial two node and brings money into the county's coffers. If there is no concern or any wrongdoing, no conflict of interest, then move forward with your resolutions. However, if there's any concerns about potential lawsuit, I would suggest a delay approving Resolution 2019-1995 until further studies have been made. Furthermore, I'm glad development standards have been set, for example, proof of sustainable water sources for any new project. I am concerned about how these waters, resources for these developments will affect my community's water source. While the EIR suggests the county has plenty of water to build out, there is no guarantee that removing millions of gallons of water from our aquifers for these future developments won't dry up our wells. While no development projects are currently on the books, I would hope that future plans be highly scrutinized and controlled to the benefit of everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Scott Fuller? And then it'll be Natasha Whit.
Madam Clerk, I apologize. Does our 30-second warning light work or does it not work? Because I was just watching it, and the yellow light didn't come on when he only had a minute or 30 seconds left. Is that, okay, maybe we take a look at that later.
Chairman Medina and Board Member Scott Fuller. I'm here as a member of the Executive Committee of the San Diego County Business Council, representing the business council. A business council consists of over 50 members, local organizations, and businesses, both large and small, and includes some of the largest employers in San Diego County. Today, I'd like to read into the record a letter from the President of the Business Council, Bob Tiffany, who couldn't be here today. Dear Chair Medina, on behalf of the San Diego County Business Council, I'm writing to encourage your continued support of implementing the 2035 general plan and the land use diagram designation of commercial residential regional zoning, therefore establishing highway commercial node boundaries for Highway 101. Following the new zoning designation, we further encourage in-depth review of the opportunities at each node based on individual, unique merits and impacts. We support the opportunities for applicants to solicit public input, encourage feedback from local stakeholders, and neighboring landowners in each region, incorporating comments in the process of developing project-specific plans where possible. We support maintaining the rural nature of the corridor while allowing for limited commercial development, informing and welcoming visitors to San Diego County, providing traveler conveniences while blending into the atmosphere with appealing architecture. The business council was engaged in the development, commented extensively in the development of the 2035 San Diego County general plan, and encouraged the development of local economic development benefit, job creation, local business growth, enhanced infrastructure, community benefit, and preservation of quality of life throughout. The nodes were supported then as targeted small opportunity zones, which remain smart and sustainable planning. To our knowledge, San Diego County holds the only expanse of the Highway 101 corridor absent of direct access to commercial activity, generation of sales tax, and transient occupancy tax. There are an estimated 250,000 car trips passing through the corridor every weekend. The combined revenue of limited commercial activity in this region could add an estimated $5 to $6 million to the county general fund to be put to work for public safety, economic and workforce development, social services, infrastructure, roads, open space, agricultural preservation, and more. Thank you again for your commitment to thoroughly evaluate and consider this request. Sincere regards, Bob Tiffany, President. Thank you. Thank you.
Natasha? James Starkle will be next.
All I can say to that is profits over people. This Saturday, I mean Friday, this Friday, I was one of a million people in this country and eight million in the world, out there with my great-grandchildren, marching for climate justice. I don't know how many of you have listened to Greta Thunberg on the news and on the TV. She is a 16-year-old girl of higher consciousness and spiritual development than I will ever be. And I, as a grandmother and great-grandmother, am committing whatever years I have left of my life to the children and great-grandchildren and great-great-grandchildren so they can breathe air that fills their lungs with oxygen, not with toxic fossil fuel fumes, so they can have water to drink. All children have water to drink that is not filled with toxics from fossil fuel extraction and fracking and the deletion of our aquifers, and that they can have land that they can grow food on because that's going to be our next global crisis, food insecurity, even in this country. So that's why I'm up here, to tell you that we here in this country, we're on the top deck of this boat. Billions are going to go before we, but we're all on the same boat, and the boat is sinking, and the water is rising. And I quote Martin Luther King, "We can work together as brothers and sisters or perish together on the ship of fools." Thank you.
After James will be Andy Shaw Coron, and then Maria Shaw Coron.
I live essentially on 156 over in the Monterey County line. Spend a lot of my time living on 156. I'm honored to be here for this historic vote. I got a sense from the last meeting that everybody on the board expressed pretty much what seemed like that they were voting for this, and I didn't quite understand. Couple weeks have gone by, so maybe some people have changed their mind, and that'd be nice, but it seemed like the board has made up its collective mind. And so the next step is that I'd like to invite everybody here to circulate the petition for the referendum. You don't have to be, take one side or the other to support the idea that the people might want to vote on this, that it's important enough, that it'd be good to see what the people think. And in that spirit, everyone here in the room is invited to get involved in the referendum and initiative processes and to circulate petitions to make sure that we can vote that way. So I encourage everyone to think about that and to possibly get involved right away to make sure we get those petitions in so that the people have the chance to vote. It's one of the features of our California system that we have these initiative referendum recall processes and that they're something that regular people can take advantage of. The referendum process does not just have to be millionaires that can pay people to get these signatures, but everybody here can do that. And as soon as the decision's reached, we can start on that. And I'd like us to really consider not getting into the roadside attraction business. I lived through the 50s, and it's not Bo Diddley and Elvis Presley.
Hi. My name is Andy Shaw Coron. I live between two of your proposed nodes on a highway with strings of these nodes, which, as I've suggested before, once you've decided to zone commercial, they become cancerous nodes. I don't agree with my friend Marty Richmond when he says you can make the decision later. Once you've zoned them commercial, for one thing, the value of the properties will go up considerably. Chances are, many of the properties will change hands, and the people who buy those properties will know what they're in for and will be trying their best to make sure that those properties return the investment that they made. So I think it's kind of foolhardy to think that, you know, once you've opened this door that you're going to be able to close it. I think that there's been very inadequate review of the impact. You've got a general plan with traffic studies that are over five years old, and the traffic has changed profoundly in the last five years, I know, because I hear it, you know, and I'm off the highway, and I can hear it now all the time. The water situation has changed profoundly, and at least the two southern nodes are part of the Parro Valley aquifer system, and they don't have adequate water. All the developments around them have lost their wells, and they've had to get their water from Aromas, and so obviously, so will these projects have to get their water from Aromas if they're ever to happen, which will draw further on the overdrawn aquifers supplying the Parro Valley and all of our wells around the area. I mentioned traffic, water. There's not been any real economic report. I don't know where the $5 million figure came from since there was no economic study, but I can make up figures too, just like anybody else. And the other issue that hasn't been considered by any stretch of the imagination is the cultural impact of these four nodes. Two of them are within the area of Eurastock, where close to 500 people marched to protect the Ammamutson, consider it the place where the world began. It's as if we were putting up McDonald's in the Vatican. That's how sacred it is to those folks. And the other two sites by Rox Ranch and 101, where shamans did ceremonies for thousands of years, Anne Marie Sayers pointed that out to you. So I think we found, we've talked to many people, and we find the sentiment in people who live in the county running at about 10 to 1 against developing these. And I think that some of you should actually cast your vote on the side of where the people are. And as far as the general plan and all of that, obviously, all those things, just like our constitution was made to be amended, general plans can be amended too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary? Did you say Mary?
Yeah.
Hi. We can't hear you back here. And Richard Whisk will be next.
Sorry. My name's Mary Shaw Coron from Aromas, and I have a friend, Cara Vonck, who sent you a written statement, and she asked me to kind of reiterate some of her points. As Cara has said, KSBW's 11:00 PM TV newscast a couple nights ago reported on the West Coast's most underrated cities. Astoria, Oregon was ranked number one, and San Juan Batista was ranked number two. She says, "I believe you are making a terrible mistake not capitalizing on our most valuable asset, the promotion of a still rural agricultural ranch historic wine and recreational county within striking business distance of major metropolitan areas. Why are we underrated? Because we have not promoted our unique assets. Three state parks, one national park, historic districts listed on the National Register of Historic Places, recreational opportunities galore, and more. The public is hungry for an authentic cultural experience. This should be our economic engine, our hook, especially now when the focus is on preserving the environment. Please don't spoil this rare opportunity forever by making our highway frontage a calling card for just another commercial blip on the horizon." I also wanted to mention that we should remember that, you know, by creating a lot of shopping areas along 101, we could be doing what Gilroy did to their downtown. You might have heard that Gilroy's downtown suffered greatly, the local businesses, when all those strip malls were put in, outlet centers, and the same thing could happen to San Juan Batista. You know, Cara Vonck is from San Juan, and I think she would be very interested in protecting the businesses of San Juan, which are all locally made, I mean locally owned predominantly. We don't have chains, and so having probably all these things, all these nodes with chain stores would take away a lot of businesses from San Juan Batista. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Natasha? Nancy Morris Lopez?
Yes. And then it'll be Natasha Whit.
Madam Clerk, I apologize. Does our 30-second warning light work or does it not work? Because I was just watching it, and the yellow light didn't come on when he only had a minute or 30 seconds left. Is that, okay, maybe we take a look at that later.
Richard Wist over on San Felipe Road in the county. I wanted to preface by the technology portion of your presentation here. I've recently been trying to, you know, follow your website and it's a little bit cumbersome for just a layperson. I just want to make that comment. Maybe you can have a section, a public section with a more simplified overview. And then you can always do more in-depth research. I'm sure all the information is great for all the county, you know, people to have that, but they're familiar with it and everything. So I think that could be done. And also, the $500 million to improve it, they're calling it public outreach, but it seems like in that website, you're saying, "Here's what we've already done. Here's where we spent your tax dollars, you know, and here's what's approved," you know. It seems very critical that there's more public outreach. Here's what's coming up. You know, we have critical decisions to make, but we need your voice heard because, you know, 60, 70,000 people in the county, I think very few of them are getting heard. And that gets to my point on this one, that since I've been participating with Protect Our Rural Communities, we've been asking hundreds of people in the county, "Are you a resident of San Benito County?" We talk to them about these things and I think it's more like 30, 40 to 1. They say, "No, we don't want these nodes. We don't want commuter developments. No, we don't want that." It's like 30 to 1. People saying, "No, we don't want this." And that, you know, and yet for this general plan and these things to be going forward, it seems like there's a big disconnect between the 60, 70,000 residents, you know, because we've talked to, I don't know, maybe 200, 300 people, and it's an informal survey, but the proportion is overwhelming. You know, just regular folks, not, you know, people with money or landowners or business people and so forth, but the regular folks, the other, you know, 60,000 people that live here, it just seems overwhelming. We don't want that. And like Mary was saying, our gold mine here is the beauty and the, you know, small town atmosphere of our county. And we're just going to ruin it and spoil it with all this development. We don't need to be a commuter economy. We need to invite local, small businesses in that can promote, stimulate development that way. Not a commuter economy where people just go to San Jose, do their shopping in San Jose and then come here because it's cheap housing or these kind of commercial developments. So I just, you know, ask you to just consider that you may be spoiling our greatest asset by moving forward in this direction and I don't think the residents want it anymore.
County Council? Can I make a comment, County Council? Just on his speech there, he said 500 million. It's 500,000. I just wanted, just for the record, just in case people are watching and they didn't watch the beginning, so just.
Thank you for directing.
Good morning, County Supervisors. My name is Jackie Morris Lopez and I am a resident of San Juan Batista. And I know I spoke at the last meeting on September 10th about the economic aspects of why you all considering this and also endorsement from your local Chamber of Commerce and your local county employees association. Well, I just want to speak on behalf of the western part of your county. I feel that you've heard enough about the, you know, the wonderful things that it can bring in, jobs and economic stimulation, you know, increase your coffers, provide infrastructure that's lacking. Well, being a resident of the western, northwestern end of the county, I feel that we lacked a voice here in this process. So I'm going to try to do that in the best I can in a minute 48 seconds. I feel that these jobs that you're trying to promote with these commercial nodes are cancerous, low-paying jobs that will perpetuate low, unaffordable housing for your residents. So what in essence you're going to promote is jobs that people cannot afford to stay in your county. So therefore, you're really not caring about the people in your districts. Number two, these jobs cannot allow an affordable income to buy homes that are now well over half a million dollars. In San Juan Batista, I told you at September 10th, the median home price is $664,000. I'm looking at all this talk about wonderful jobs coming in, you don't realize what you're destroying, profits over people. We have wonderful resources here in our wonderful rural area. And when I look at this as a San Juan resident, a northwestern constituent of all of you sitting up here, is that this has to do more with Hollister and your overgrowth and your poor planning at the level of your city council, at the level of proponents for the development. So now what we have to do on the northwestern end is make up for that. And I don't like that. And people in my town don't like that. You're going to suck our economic engine in San Juan dry. They're nothing more than sideshow, quick fix, quick food, and they're going to divert the traffic away from our community and especially San Juan Batista where there are small businesses. Yes, I'm for development, wise development. Why not look to the eastern part of the county and bring in some green businesses? Bring in maybe a tech business, you know, a campus out here, something that's reasonable and realistic and in line with what you want to do, which is providing jobs so people don't have to leave the county. Thank you.
Mary, Secretary Edge?
Thank you. I think she left. Ms. Edge? Oh, there she is.
Mary Edge from San Juan Batista. I've talked, had the opportunity to talk to a few of you, not all of you, about these commercial nodes. And I've voiced my opinion and let you know how I oppose them. And so I think that I can see that you've decided pretty much that you're going to go ahead and go with them. What I'm asking you, from the bottom of my heart, is please take into consideration San Juan Batista. In 2009, we had recession and doors closed in downtown San Juan Batista. There was nobody open. There were no businesses. And we are just now getting back on our feet. There are still places that are closed right now. And so, you know, these nodes will affect our economy in San Juan Batista. Take into consideration a letter that the city council wrote to you that was signed by our mayor, Cesar Flores. And finally, I just want you to really think and make sure that the developers do their studies, that you do your studies, you do your homework, so that if these developments come in, that they don't affect us in San Juan Batista so much. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Ms. Edge.
Michael Pusk.
Thank you for your time and patience. I'm a 20-year residence of San Juan. I think Mr. Batella knows me really well. I probably opposed him on everything he ever wanted to do. 20 years of mess. You've grown crazy. The state had to stop you from growing because your sewers were backing up your city. Soon as you got the new sewer plant, boom, growth like crazy. No consideration what you're doing. The roads are impacted. You tell me the roads aren't, get on them in the morning. Now you want to do this. I'm a grandfather of seven. I'll have my 11th great-grandchild next month. I loved this area. That's why I moved here. And I, my neighbors had told me, said, "This is the county of the gang that can't shoot straight." It's always gone and picked the worst possible solution to any problem. Please don't do this. This is the worst, because you've made bad decisions in the past and it's costed. The county's got to find a way to make money. This isn't the way. And if you let me, because I only talked a minute, you can give my time to somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Zachary Walton, in connection with the property owners in relationship to the commercial nodes. I have three quick points. The first is that the commercial nodes preserve open space and they do so by concentrating commercial development within those nodes, leaving open space in between. The second point is that the concerns that we've heard about the potential impacts in connection with particular developments, for example, with water supply or cultural resources and things of that nature, those all must be considered in connection with individual developments. There will be site-specific permitting process that must look at all of those issues individually. And so you will be in a position to consider them at that time. And then the final point that I just want to mention is that much of the opposition that you're hearing today is with regard to the commercial nodes themselves. And the board made the decision in 2015 when it updated the general plan to put the policies in place for the commercial nodes. And what's in front of you today is the zoning code to implement the commercial nodes. And the question is whether the zoning code furthers those policies, and I would submit that they do. But the other point to consider is that any challenge to your decision today, whether it's litigation or whether it's a referendum, would have to be focused on the zoning code itself. It would not be to the general plan, to the policies of the commercial nodes, because that decision has already been made. The statute of limitations has long since passed. A referendum can't address more than one, must address a single subject. So again, the issue in front of you is whether the zoning code really reflects the policies that were put in place when the general plan was updated. And it seems very clear to me that they do. Thank you.
Bring it back to the board. What's the wish to the board?
I'd like to make a couple of comments, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just a second.
Amy?
Yeah.
No problem.
So, members of the Board of Supervisors, I think the proposed rezoning ordinance to rezone agricultural and floodplain land for commercial development is criminal and in time, I believe it will get the scrutiny it deserves. Individuals of good conscience will fight it. We will fight this monstrous plan and we will stop it. We will stop you from depleting this critically overdrawn aquifers your plan depends on. We will stop you from encroaching on the indigenous Ammamutsun people's sacred lands. We will stop you from dispoiling the earth for the sake of commercial development. We will stop you from diverting tourists away from San Juan Batista to bankrupt small businesses. We will stop you from bringing endless trash, sewage and crime into this county by moving forward with this rezoning ordinance. And if you approve this ordinance, we will let the voters know so they don't make the mistake of putting you in charge of their county again.
Bring it back to the board. Supervisor Gillio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to say a few words. I did say quite a bit at the last hearing and I'll keep my comments brief, but I would like to let folks know, especially the folks that are concerned about these nodes and are against the nodes, that I did take my time. I met with the pork group. I met with landowners. I actually physically walked out on the property to the nodes that were most concerned about and was there. I studied the general plan, Land Use Section 5.1. I think there are a lot of protections for San Juan Batista. One of the things expressly called out in Land Use Section, I believe it's 5.3, but I don't have it right in front of me right this second. It is 5.3. Talks about no node at 101 and 156 specifically. Now, with all that being said, I can see the sentiment particularly of Mrs. Edge and San Juan Batista residents. You know, we have a state government that oftentimes tells us, you know, "We're going to do this. We're going to implement this. We're going to do these different things." And we, as a county, are like, "Oh, boy, this is going to be tough for us to figure out." So I understand your sentiment because I think it kind of goes a step further for you. It's now it's the county kind of perhaps implementing something that you may, you feel will affect San Juan Batista. What I'm committed to telling you here today is although I support this today, I will be prepared to scrutinize each one of these projects. I met with you personally and I told you that and I sincerely mean that. And anything that we can do to help benefit San Juan Batista, if and when there is a project that comes through, you have my commitment to that and I'm looking at you now and I'm giving you my word that I will do that for what I can do. Thank you.
Supervisor Batella?
Yeah, well, this is in my district. And a lot of the concerns that was brought out at the previous meeting and over a period of time at the Plan Commission and even today, I have thought about this very deeply, not just since this effort to rezone these four areas, but in the general plan process as well, and the impacts that any type of development has in the western part of the county. It was really important to me personally to make sure that we preserve and protect our environment. And everybody in this room has known that I've done just that on a number of different issues. This is no exception. Inside, the zoning ordinance does address a number of clauses that insist that any type of development really has to be conforming to the entire area. It has to address water. This commercial zoning ordinance is probably the most restrictive and detailed zoning ordinance in the state. In the state. You know, I think we definitely need the jobs in this county. I disagree with one speaker that just because it's, you know, lower-end jobs, but guess what? Those lead to higher-end jobs. There's not one of us in this room probably that didn't have a lower salary job at one point in their life or another. And then you build on that and you build your life. I know the revenues from these jobs and the money being spent is to create tax revenue for this county. I'm kind of surprised we didn't have a bunch of protesters, county workers outside, you know, we're in negotiations with our bargaining units. And they're struggling. They're struggling because we're struggling. And we're not able to sustain, you know, reasonable services unless we're going to address their salary structure. And we're trying to do that and we need a variety of revenue streams. All four of these commercial areas have already been somewhat been developed. Bedable Y had buildings on it already. It was a junkyard and we have pitchers. It's just going to be a different type of commercial area than what it was, you know, in the past. 101, at 129, heck, I'm, it's in a pocket. And you probably can't even see the area that is to be developed from 101. You won't be able to see it. Livestock 101 Ranch is already a C2. And Rocks Ranch, you could throw a baseball and hit Monterey County and you have commercial activities going on there. We need to have an opportunity to take advantage of this corridor for a number of reasons. And guess what? The environment is still rural and protected with the zoning ordinance that has set standards of what's going to be out there in the future. It's a critical mistake the pork folks are making in opposing this zoning ordinance. Without this, we really don't have any means of protections along that corridor. And that's when you have the problems that we have been faced with. And that's when you have the problems that we have been faced with already, as history has shown. Again, you know, I want to thank our staff for bringing this forward, our consultants that have put in countless of hours, and property owners for willingness to be really good neighbors. And I really thank them. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Supervisor Dela Cruz.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank the members of the Roma's communities for allowing me to join them in a couple of meetings. I really do appreciate their comments and feedback, and also to staff for, you know, guiding us through these moments. And just as Supervisor Gillio, you know, we're going to work hard to make sure that everyone's concerns are addressed, and we'll try to be good neighbors and work together. I feel that this is the beginning step of that relationship. It could either go one way or the other. I hope it goes in the best interest of the community, because it's all about economic opportunity in our community right now. And I hope that, you know, our differences of view, our difference of political view doesn't get in the way of progress, and I just wanted to share that with the board, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez, anything?
I'll keep my comments short. I've too sat down with those folks, Supervisor Gillio, with the Preserve Our Real Community folks, and I do appreciate your input. There's a lot of opportunity for scrutiny. Scrutiny will still be part of the process, and as Supervisor Patel had mentioned, that master plan is very detailed and involved in making sure that each individual node has standards that are, you know, I would agree that the level of scrutiny that they require is, it makes it, it begs for scrutiny in that sense, so it pushes for making sure that we're preserving the landscape of our community. And I too love our small-town community, and growth has been a part of the problem as San Juan County has faced for a long time now with the developments that have been happening, but mostly residential. That's why this is a commercial project. And this is not profits over people, because the reality is, is how are you going to address the issues of a people that needs money to be able to address their issues? Whether it's through behavioral health or all these different elements, there's different things that are required to be able to support the community, and funding is a mechanism of it. So there's a balance, and striking that balance is really hard. And we ultimately, at the end of the day, the 101 corridor is an opportunity for us to help strike that balance. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Wish to the board?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I understand there is a number of motions to be made, and each of them we need to take individually.
Just so we're very educated on this and everything's legal, can you assist us, Barbara? Thank you.
If you could just, if you could possibly make the motions one at a time, reading what's in the motion, and take a vote after each motion, that'd be appreciated. It's on page, on the agenda item transmittal. Do you have that before?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If I may crack at the first one, I guess. I'll make a motion on Resolution 201995, connecting, correcting figures in the general plan depleting the location of the regional commercial nodes to reflect the determinations by the Board of Supervisors when adopting the 2035 general plan.
And to adopt that resolution?
Adopt a resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero? Number two?
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 201996, considering the addendum to the 2035 general plan EIR, adopting the addendum and sequel findings for the zoning code amendment to establish the regional commercial C3 zoning district.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero?
Make a motion to accept the introduction, waiving the formal reading, and adopt ordinance number 991, amending the county code zoning regulations to establish a regional commercial C3 zoning district.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero?
Since you're doing a good job, continue. I'm happy you think so. I'm sure there's other people out there that don't.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 201997, considering the addendum for the 2035 general plan EIR, adopting the addendum and sequel findings for the zoning map amendment for the beddable C3 node.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero?
Make a motion to accept the introduction, waive formal reading, adopt zoning, adopt ordinance number 992, amending the county zoning map for the beddable C3 node, subject to condition of approval number one set forth below.
Is there a second?
Second. Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 201998, considering the addendum to the general, addendum to the 2035 general plan EIR, adopting the addendum and sequel findings for the zoning map amendment for the SR 129 C3 node.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero?
Make a motion to accept the introduction, waive formal reading, adopt ordinance number 993, amending the county zoning map for the SR 129 C3 node, subject to a condition of approval number one set forth below.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 201999, considering the addendum of 2035 general plan EIR, adopting addendum and sequel findings for the zoning map amendment for the Rocks Ranch C3 node.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero?
Make a motion to accept the introduction, waive formal reading, and adopt ordinance number 994, amending the county zoning map for the Rocks Ranch C3 node, subject to condition number, condition of approval number one set forth below.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019100, considering the addendum to the 2035 general plan EIR, and adopting the addendum and sequel findings for the zoning map amendment for the livestock 101 C3 node.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero?
Make a motion to accept introduction and waive formal reading, adopt ordinance number 995, amending the county zoning map for the livestock 101 C3 node, subject to condition of approval number one set forth below.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero?
Now, do we need to read the condition?
No.
Okay, good.
Just for the record, there were 11 motions made, correct? All were unanimous? This, at this time, we'll close public hearing. And we'll go to our regular agenda. We'll start off with number 30.
Mr. Chair, may I request a two-minute break? I need to use the restroom, I apologize.
About a minute and a half.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good one.
Okay, if you're gonna continue here, let's uh si- take your seat so we can get going. Supervisor Dela Cruz.
Management Agency, Mr. Harry?
Yes, good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. This is a project to repair Best Roads, approximately a mile and a half. Uh, we had talked about it earlier this morning and the damage it has, and uh, we'd like to move quickly to get this repaired, so we recommend that you approve this item.
One question, um, the money coming from the enterprise fund zone?
Uh, yes, sir, the money is coming from the enterprise fund.
Supervisor Patel, anything? Gilio?
Uh, yeah, just real quickly, I would like to thank staff for getting this on so quickly, and just again point out, as the Chair did, that this is enterprise funds that are restricted to use on impacts of the landfill, and this road currently has a PCI average of about twenty. And as you guys know, below twenty-four is very poor, which is below failed. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez, anything?
Supervisor Gilia kinda answered my questions, so yeah, and how are you, how are you distributing those funds, but it's according to the PCI average?
That's correct, we're looking at the condition of the roads.
Wait, 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 hold on one second, let's go back, sorry Peter. We are not doing it based on the PCI, what we're doing is, this has to be in the spear or being used as a root or been caused by erosion from the landfill, being that we're using the enterprise funds. Am I correct on that?
That is correct, uh, as a side issue, the condition of the road is very poor, and that was pointed out earlier, and it's in the staff report, but we are using the enterprise fund because of the access to the landfill and the damage that has been done to the road from that.
So I guess my only other question is, how do you measure which roads are the ones that are being impacted?
Well, I think that's all, any, any, my humble opinion, sorry to jump on your question there, Harry, my humble opinion is, is, you know, if you think about the, the roads around the landfill, and you, you think about how many trucks are going down them, I think, you know, you have Best Road, John Smith Road, Fairview Road, McCloskey Shore Road, you know, any of those ingress and egress roads are causing damage, and, and there was also a study done in the past by um, the county on the condition of the roads and, and how much the landfill was causing the damage. And um, this one in particular is just getting to be the point where it's unsafe to just fill the potholes, 'cause it's all the way down through the base to the dirt, so it's kinda like when we fixed John Smith Road, using that funds, I think, I think it's the, the right thing to do, and then I also think that we should look at the balance of that enterprise fund in the future, and specifically, in my humble opinion, this is just one supervisor saying this, we should take a look at Fairview Road and try to do as much of Fairview Road in a um, in a grinding and repaving manner as opposed to just a pothole filling, using these funds that are restricted for landfill impacts. I hope that helps, Supervisor Hernandez, that's just my opinion.
Supervisor Patel?
Uh, yes, Supervisor Hernandez has done, I um, I, I did a little study myself, I went to a landfill, I don't know, a few weeks ago, and, and there was a truck that was obviously going to a landfill too, we were both stopped at uh, uh, Airline Highway and Fairview, he was going straight with his load, and I was making a left turn to go d- on John Smith, before it was repaved actually, so you have to go a little slower, so I just wanted to see who comes out first at the, the, the scale. Sure enough, I turned left, and then he went straight, he went to Best Road, and I went on John Smith, fought the potholes there, but we both came to the, the same point at the same time. What that told me was that there's a lot of people that use Best Road uh, as a haul road going to John Smith, and um, I, I really think that if we could fix John's, I mean, Best Road, John Smith, areas that our road crew is out there fixing potholes, now they don't have to be out there fixing potholes there, they could go to our other roads and fix potholes elsewhere in the county, uh, we just made s- a stretch of road that they don't have to be there, and i- it's more cost effective for our other road money, but we, we should use enterprise funds to fix the impacts that, that enterprise is creating.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Peter, or Hernandez, any other questions?
No, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Dela Cruz, anything?
Nope.
What's the wish, or a public comment, any public comment? What's the wish of the board?
Chair, I recommend. I recommend that we approve this item, and that we also, um, let me read the recommendation, please, I'm sorry, I clicked off of it, and uh, delegate the authority to the RMA Director to move forward with the Best Road CIR Overlay Maintenance and Shoulder Drainage Repair, PWB nineteen oh two project through the invitation for bids, process, approve the RMA Director to approve a scope of work for the project not to exceed one point five million, approve budget adjustment, increasing appropriation to the amount of one point five million for the transfer of fund balance for the Integrated Waste Fund to the Road Fund, and one point five million for increased appropriations in the Road Fund for expenditures related to this project, the Best Road CIR Maintenance and Shoulder Drainage Repair Project, PWB hyphen nineteen oh two.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. The number thirty-one, Resource Management Agency, this is in regards to the Buena Vista Road between San Benito Avenue and Highway one fifty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Buena Vista, Buena Vista Road is um, about to become even more heavily traveled, as the last piece of it is being completed now, uh, the old North Street right away up to San Benito Avenue. Uh, in regards to that, because that's imminent, uh, there's a need to work with the city and develop a plan uh, to help traffic calm this street. Uh, I've had two meetings with the city already, uh, we're proposing to have a community meeting in early October, uh, in order to determine uh, a specific plan for what we're gonna do. This would involve everything from four-way stops, uh, striping, uh, and some potential uh, traffic circles, and other methods recognized, uh, as well as crosswalks, uh, to uh, slow down the traffic on that very busy road. Uh, the funding on the city side, uh, I, they have told us is available from several uh, development projects, uh, as their mitigation fees, we are proposing to use two hundred seventy thousand dollars uh, from the Measure G funds, where as uh, the CAO mentioned to you earlier, uh, we will be coming to you in the next meeting with a plan for utilizing uh, our total Measure G funds, this is one of those projects, but because of the necessity to work with the community quickly, uh, before that road gets finished, we're bringing this to you forward now. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Supervisor Dela Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, this is a, and I wanna thank both the City Hollister and the, and our staff for getting together and, and facilitating this meeting, uh, um, it is urgent and important that we move, move the issue forward, because North Street Extension will be opening up pretty soon, there'll be a lot of cars going through that road, and I've been hearing from a lot of members of the public, especially along Buena Vista Road, and even the new homeowners that have actually moved in are beginning to complain now about how, how the house was built, the ways that they, their kids come through the, the driveway and into oncoming traffic, and I just said, I'm not here to discuss those issues, I'm here to solve a, a, a community problem, and so, uh, I have actually gone, been, I actually kinda went out on the limb and emailed a lot of my constituents in that district, informing them that there will be a meeting in the near future between the City Hollister and San Benito County to discuss options how to best address traffic, and in light of North Street Extension opening up, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, I, I, I just, um, I applaud Supervisor Dela Cruz for tackling this issue, I, I've been on that road, and you know, there by the school is somewhat challenging and, and dangerous, uh, and I also hope that we work with the city and look for complete sidewalks too, you know, you know, even in, in the county portions, uh, if, if it's at all possible, if there's some grants or some funding uh, through COG or something like that, that we could kinda take advantage of, but it, it does need to be addressed, and good work.
Any other questions from the board? Any public, oh, sorry Barbara?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, if I could just clarify whether it's San Benito Avenue or San Benito Street, um, is it, if the staff would have the ability to correct that, if it meant, if it's intended to be San Benito Street? Or San Benito Road, I guess? San Benito? Street? Street? Yeah, San Benito Street versus Avenue, we just need to verify that.
Okay.
San Benito Street.
Street.
Any public comment?
Thank you for your time, um, I, I hadn't planned on speaking, but since this came up before I left, um, yes, this needs to be done, there's no question about that, I also would encourage during that same meeting, that they start, we already start discussion on the problem of uh, 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 the street going out to one fifty-six, uh, people are now starting to use that, uh, uncontrolled entrance as, as a way to get to work, and talk about dangerous, we, we keep talking about something's dangerous, that one scares the hell out of me, I gotta tell you that, for people wanting to make a left turn across traffic, um, once they get up there, we, we're gonna have to have some traffic control up there at, at the end of, of, of the road, uh, um, and also, I, I do agree, there'll be, need appropriate pedestrian crossings and, and traffic control in, in town, uh, kids going, going to, to, to school and so on and so forth, but I keep thinking about, I think we've had a couple fatality accidents, right where um, uh, Buena Vista Road goes into, goes into highway, I believe we've had one or two over the last five or six years, and uh, more and more traffic's gonna go up there, and because that's essentially an uncontrolled intersection, uh, with a highway and the trucks and takes so long to stop, um, and people are late for work, and they do not look in both ways before they try to tackle that, that uh, uncontrolled area, um, it's a potentially terrible, terrible place, so um, I hope you'll bring that up and bring it to the COG Board, um, as a, as a group, both the county and the city, and I'll encourage the city to do exactly the same, and see if we can't start talking to Caltrans about getting some controls up there. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Bring it back to the board, what's the wish of the board?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to, that we adopt the resolution endorsing the development and implementation of a traffic comment plan in cooperation with the City Hollister for Beno East, Buena Vista Road between San Benito Street and Highway one fifty-six, and committing the contribution currently available, two hundred and seventy thousand Measure G funds to, to its implementation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. It's uh, twelve oh two, and there's two more to be done, thirty-two and thirty-four, which seem pretty fast, is that all right if we proceed?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll go with thirty-two. Um, County Council?
I'm gonna read the title of the ordinance for the record, it's an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the Cam- County of San Benito, adding section five point oh nine point zero one seven to chapter five point oh nine of Title V of the San Benito County Code relating to leases and licenses of county real property. So basically, the law allows an abbreviated um, process when uh, the monthly value of a lease or license is less than ten thousand dollars, um, I was very conservative when I wrote this ordinance, and just indicated that, that abbreviated process would be um, for leases or licenses, less than one thousand dollars per month, the board, of course, could approve that at a higher number if it chose to, um, you know, delegate, uh, I mean, to have this abbreviated process for leases or licenses up to ten thousand dollars, but this allows it to be um, published, uh, uh, I believe, once, and it, it cuts for, it shortens the time period, and allows the CAO um, to provide notice to the, the district um, in which the lease or license is to be executed, and then to um, execute that agreement after they go through the public bidding process, I meant the public process, posting of it.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask a quick question?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I definitely support this, I, I just think a thousand dollars is too low, I, I can't think of any, well, I'm sure you guys can, but I can't think of any lease that's less than a thousand dollars a month, I mean, if you wanna rent a one-bedroom house, now you're paying more than that, or even just an extra bedroom in somebody's house, so, I don't know if this is gonna help you at that lower level, so um, after discussion, if nobody objects, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I, I would like to increase that to at least seventy-five hundred dollars, and then we're still below the state um, contract code, and thank you.
Is that a motion? Anyone have any questions on the seventy-five hundred, which seem to me still a bit low, but I will go for that? Is there any?
Thirty-five or seventy-five?
Seventy-five, seven-five. Any public comment? Thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
Bring it back to the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I move that we adopt this resolution with the exception of, oh, go ahead, Barbara, do you, do I need, do you need specific language?
Yes, on number two, um, on page fourteen eighty-three, we're actually gonna bring it back at a future meeting, I'm sorry, we're just gonna accept, we, rate for the reading, accept introduction, and continue it.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do that.
As modified.
As modified, up to the seventy-five hundred dollar um, uh, number.
Second.
As, per staff recommendation with that change.
Per staff recommendation with that change, thank you, Barbara.
There's a second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Move to number thirty-four now?
Good one. Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I asked to put this in regular session, I, the clerk was debating whether it should have gone just in consent, and being that uh, these uh, certificates of recognition are be presented at a later date, but I, I wanted to read into the record, um, Ruth, uh, Mar- uh, I, I wish I, I hope I pronounced her name right, Marcias de Escoto?
Escoto.
Escoto, Jerry Sierra, Michael Ostrowski, uh, uh, yeah, and Jeffrey Ingles and Jose Martinez, uh, in their dedication to the Deanza Trail, his, uh, National Historic Trail in San Juan Batista, you know, without volunteers, uh, this trail goes into, you know, disrepair. We have a good partner with Granite Rock, uh, they go up and grade it every once in a while, uh, and we kinda oversee the, the trail, and then with fine people like Jim Slesnik and, and many others besides these folks, it's a nice trail utilized by a lot of people within the whole region, I, and uh, it, it is one of our uh, county gyms, and uh, quite a hike, I might warn you, I, I don't think Supervisor Dela Cruz ought to take it, but uh-
Ouch!
But uh, but I know our CAO Espinoza does run up and down the trail once in a while, um, and you know, and, and it's exciting to have something like this, and it's a, not only a national significance, it's an international significance, a trail be- begins in Mexico and goes all the way through California, and Arizona, California, and up to San Francisco, and it's quite a history of uh, of trailblazers, so to speak, and, and very important part of California, uh, and you know, one of the things that I'm excited about, we, in a pre- the previous um, commercial node rezoning, the Bena Bull Y is part of that trail, and what we're, you know, I've been in contact with the, the National Deanza Trail Parks people, to see if we could extend that trail through that one-on-one corridor, yeah, and enhance it even more so, and promote San Juan and, and our parks, uh, on top of it, and the property owners are willing to do this, and, and you know, this is some exciting opportunities that some of the opposition unfortunately don't quite understand, and so I, I wanted this on, on uh, open session so I could read it into the record, and uh, and, and at a future date, present these uh, recognitions to these ve- very deserving folks.
Thank you.
Uh, just quickly, Mr. Chair, um, I, I read the background material on this, and I thought it was funny, because I'm gonna read the, I'm gonna read what it says here, because I think we should add Jim back in there, because it says, here is a certificate you set up for Jim years ago, he does not need another, I say give Jim another certificate, no? But uh, Mike, Michael's here, and Michael um, maybe could comment on that if, if he chooses to during the public comment session, I, I just thought that was interesting, because why not give another one, and Michael, thank you for all you do for the trail, I really appreciate it.
Okay, we'll open it for public comment.
And I didn't wanna make any disrespect to Jim West, you know, he's done a remarkable job in Granite Rock and everything, but I wanted to make a, uh, let you know that we run into a lot of trouble with the National Park, because there's not supposed to be any memorials on the trail, and if we could move the rock down to where, the beginning of the trail where it's on, off the part that's officially government, because, and it, and it, because then it encourages other people to put memorials up there, and it's-
Where would that-
Jim, I didn't know Jim very well, but I knew he did a lot of good for the community, the people in San Juan loved him, and it's a, you know, it's a nice thing to have, but it's a distraction to the trail, and then other people wanna put memorials, so, other than that, but keep up the good work, and maybe we can extend the trail, and even though I'm not for nodes, I am for spanning the trail. Thanks for your time.
Before you leave, before you leave, where would that be, to put in the uh- The gate is, yes.
You know, or Mr. Bee's, when you come in there where it says, you know, Deanza Trail, there'd be a, because more people would see it too, because you know, people go, who is this?
That's a good point.
Okay.
People wanna do memorials, wanna put benches and stuff.
Well, well, thank you. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Bring it back to the board, I-
I'll make a motion to uh, accept the uh, uh, the recognitions.
I'll second it, but I'd like to add Jim in there as a certificate too, is that okay with you as a friendly amendment?
Yeah, sure.
We got a friendly amendment to add?
I would like to abstain on this matter.
Jim Slesnik?
Yeah. Cause I can't walk it.
All in uh-
Jim and Gail Slesnik.
Um, all in favor with, hi me, my son and I will walk with you up there, okay?
Talking over each other, and, and I'll, I'll speak again here, clearly, my second amendment would be to add Jim and Gail Slesnik to the list of people receiving certificates, that's my friendly amendment.
And, and uh, as a motion maker, I accept.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi me? Okay, we have five zero. Um, we're going to head to closed session, can you report what closed session?
Number thirty-five's gonna be taken off the agenda with the Chair's permission.
Yes.
Thirty-six, closed session conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to D two and E two of Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, number of cases, one, potential for additional litigation relating to the master tax agreement currently being litigated in Award Home and BMC Promise Way, thirty-seven, conference with, closed session conference with labor negotiator, existing designated representatives, Michael McDugo and Ray Espinoza, Edgar Nolasco, Stuart Patry, Alvia Brocio, and Barbara Thompson, employee organizations, institutions, association, law enforcement, management, management employees group, SEIU Local five twenty-one. Deputy Sheriff's Association, confidential employees, confidential management, appointed department heads, unrepresented employees pursuant to five four nine five seven, nine five seven point six of Government Code. Thirty-eight, closed session conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, number of cases, two, subdivisions A and D one of five four nine five six point nine, BMC Promise Way, uh, doing bet- businesses, benchmark communities, County versus County of San Benito, um, at Al's, sixth appellate district court of appeals, case number H zero four six seven oh seven, and Award Homes versus County of San Benito, um, sixth appellate district, case number H zero four four eight nine four, and then number thirty-nine, which was added to, by the board today, would be closed session pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, D two and E one.
Is there any public comment? Thank you.